Good evening, Milis, and welcome to the January 27, 2020 Select Board Meeting. We have a power-packed meeting, and we have an audience filling up I am delighted to share. I'm going to introduce the people who you will see frequently at the front of the room. To my far left is Jay Tallerman of Mead Tallerman Acosta, our lead town council for Milis. To his right is Peter Germain, our clerk, and to my immediate left and your right is James McCaffrey, veteran member of this board and currently the vice chair. To my immediate right, your left, is Michael Gazinski, our town administrator, and to his right, your left, is Karen Burey, who is the operations director of the town. So, welcome and thank you for tuning in and/or attending. We have a couple of announcements. I'm actually going to start with Mr. McCaffrey, who would like to make an announcement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Even though Tom Brady and company will not be in Miami, as far as we know, Sunday, it still is Super Bowl Sunday, and in Milis that means a couple of important events, one of which is the Milis Fund Sunday. The Milis Fund is going out to the community, again, as it does every year on Super Bowl Sunday, asking for contributions to help support the organization. It's really a support for the Milis community. The funds raised are used to help Milis families with emergency financial needs. Over 350 families in Milis have been helped by the fund since 1994. Ninety-nine percent of your contributions go directly to helping Milis families, and it's administered by an all-volunteer operating board of Milis citizens. So donations are welcome at any time, but this is the time of year when they reach out at the community as a whole. On Sunday, you can certainly communicate or donate directly to the Milis Fund at 142 Exchange Street, Milis, Mass., by mail, if you would like. Also, the Milis Houses of Worship this Sunday will be taking up special contributions to support the Milis Fund. So this Milis Fund and the board are asking you to consider them as part of your giving needs for Super Bowl Sunday. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. As I reach for the wrong piece of paper. So for everybody who hasn't been aware or is just coming to focus on 2020, we have an election coming up, and I want to encourage everybody within the sound of my voice or a couple of steps from their television of this broadcast or in our audience to consider your time, your talent, your ideas, and even, yes, your frustrations by looking at that list of 11 offices and determining whether or not it's something that you might want to take on. And what I want to do very briefly is I want to dispel a couple of rumors about elected office. The first of which is that you have to have done it before. So I'm living proof that, no, you don't have to have done it before, and you can still be effective in the areas that are important to you and are important to your town, because the institutions are bigger than any one person and bigger than any one board. So I hope that if you're thinking about it, and that's where you're falling in your decision process, then in fact you're thinking, gee, I've never done this before, I don't think I could do it. I just want you to know, starting to my right, our town administrator, and to his right, Karen, and all the different committees and boards that exist in the town, they lift you and they support you, and the boards have institutional structures, and it really doesn't take you too long to figure out the rhythm of conducting business in the areas of your interest. And we're a small town, and we really do need more people, more voices, more ideas, and quite frankly, as I look in the mirror, more generations. So I want to encourage people to consider the gift of time for the impact of their efforts coming up. And if you go to the town clerk's office, you will see, or my Milis Facebook page, Loring for Milis, you'll see the list of opportunities that are there. I want to acknowledge somebody who could not join us this evening but who has been joining the town for now 34 years, and his name is David Byrne. David Byrne has been a fixture in this town. He was born here. He has worked in many capacities in Milis, always behind the scenes. He has been, for a long time, our wiring inspector. He has had a lot to do with the preservation, well beyond its prime, of the predecessor Clyde F. Brown Elementary School. He has done a lot to ensure structural integrity for wherever the future takes us with respect to the middle and high school. He was a vital member of our local emergency planning committee, which he, in fact, helped to bring into operation. And this gets into the very real needs we would have for emergency communication and response, complete with operational bunker, emergency destination facilities, an internal and emergency connecting radio system that goes into the Massachusetts Emergency Management Office. He had a lot to do with modernizing schools. He had a lot to do with submitting grants for a variety of important renovations. He worked with capital planning, both consultants as well as the committee, to do various needs assessment, remembering he has 34 years. So this may not be something you heard of within the last two, but he's been around for a lot longer than that. And he says that a lot of his work ultimately helps to raise everybody's home valuations because of the work that he knows he contributed to. And finally, I wanted to say that the fire chief wanted to echo that his focus on safety was unrelenting, and he has decided that a well-deserved retirement is in order, and so we wanted to acknowledge him, even though he was unable to be here. He knew that this was going to be done, and he said it was important for everybody to know this is completely not his style. So I think that even if he could drop something to come here, I don't think he would have been inclined to do so. But we do want to wish him the very best in his retirement and his newfound love of bicycling, and I don't know if any of my colleagues have anything to add.
I think you've said it all, but he can look back on a job well done, that's for sure.
I would echo that. Dave has been very helpful in every committee I've served on, and I respect very much the contributions he's made to this town.
Okay. Are there any other announcements for the town at this point? Okay, I'm going to move right along to our public hearings and scheduled appointments, and I guess this is one of those times where you can say it's good that the sheriff is in town. But actually, we're very happy to have Sheriff Jerry McDermott, and I'm going to invite you to the front table and ask you to grab that microphone, come to Milis, because even though he is here right now, what everybody needs to know is that the sheriff and his team have been very helpful to our town in making us a place where the work release program eligible workers could actually come, and for an extremely mutually beneficial work arrangement. Everybody with whom I've personally come in contact with has been outstanding, and we've had the people through your office who've been incredibly helpful to us, where we really didn't have any labor resources to handle some of our outside landscaping and property management needs, as well as, I think, most recently, the painting. Fabulous guys with voracious appetites, but super polite. So we are delighted to invite the sheriff to tell us what is new in Norfolk County that we need to know about. So thank you so much.
Terrific. Madam Chairwoman and members of the board, thank you so much for allowing me this opportunity to give a brief update. Again, my name is Jerry McDermott, sheriff of Norfolk County. Beginning my second year now, I was appointed back in December of 2018 by Governor Charlie Baker. As many of you know, the former sheriff, Mike Bellotti, went on to be president of Quincy College. So just for your viewing audience at home, they might say this guy doesn't look like Bellotti at all. But to your point earlier, Madam Chairwoman, about the community inmate work crews, I would encourage not just the municipality, but if there are other nonprofits in your community of Milis that would like to take advantage. In each of the packets that you've been provided, it has information that we could share. We've gone out and taken care of councils on aging. We've worked with other nonprofits throughout Norfolk County, all 28 communities, and to date, we've saved about $290,000 for municipalities and nonprofits by having these inmate work crews get out there. And as you know, these are the lowest-level offenders. They're very little risk to the community at all. Most of them are very close to the end of their sentence, so they really don't want to risk going back inside and being incarcerated again for a longer period of time. And as you pointed out, they love to come out and do community work. It's the one time they don't have to eat the jail food. They get to come out and actually, you know, maybe get a sub or sandwich or a pizza, and they get to listen to music. And what it's really doing, on a more serious note, is it's giving them real-life practical skills. So one thing that we do at the House of Corrections is our focus is taking broken people who have certainly committed crimes, and they're doing their time, but it's incumbent upon us, while they're in our care and custody, to make them better people, so that when they leave our care and custody, they're going back out and being productive members of society. It's incumbent upon all of us to do this, to work on this effort, because we're now seeing it's about $211 to $214 per night, per inmate. So right now, we've got about 450 men up in Dedham at the Norfolk County House of Corrections. So most of the sentenced population is staying about 55 to 60 days. It's not that long at the county system. So we know that 99% of the people that come through our door are coming back to our community. So that's why we put such an effort into the rehabilitation programs, helping people get clean and sober and get their lives back on track. And to that end, one exciting program that we've started, and I wanted to update the board on tonight, was the MAT program, and that's called the Medication-Assisted Treatment. Out of the 14 county sheriffs, Norfolk County is one of seven who stepped up and said, we'll try this pilot program. And the history of it is this: We were seeing inmates who, let's say, were coming in with an addiction to heroin, and they had committed crimes to support their drug habit. They would come into incarceration, go cold turkey. As soon as their sentence was over, they would get back out, think that their body could handle the same amount of heroin that they were used to injecting. Now they'd get a very strong batch, a potent batch of heroin, maybe laced with fentanyl, and we were seeing fatalities. I believe there were 150 fatal overdoses in Norfolk County just in 2017. These aren't, you know, faceless people. These are, you know, these are the sons and daughters and neighbors of everybody in Norfolk County who, you know, maybe had some mental illness, had some issues that weren't addressed, and then began self-medicating with alcohol and illicit drugs. So Public Safety got together with the governor, and they said, let's try this. Let's work with the county sheriffs and introduce this medication-assisted treatment. We're tracking these folks, not just while they're in our care and custody, but we're going to track them for a year after. So you'll hear more about the MAT program going forward. But besides treating people with addictions, we're really trying to get them skilled up, and we have a short window to do that. So we're working with the building trades. We're offering culinary arts programs, painting, plastering. In the spring, we're going to do hardscaping. So if you have any outside projects that you'd like us to work with you on, maybe laying a serpentine brick patio somewhere or walkways, we're all about getting our inmates skilled up. Another important update is our female population. When I became sheriff, the female offenders in Norfolk County were still being sent to MCI Framingham. And I know this is a G-rated show, so I won't say anything too harsh, but it's not the nicest place to do your time. Some people have referred to it in other terms, but when I was speaking with defense attorneys, they didn't even want to go there to visit their clients. So we immediately looked at the number of female offenders and made a partnership with Suffolk County, which had the facilities ready to take female offenders. We don't, but we are in the process of a study phase right now. We have two buildings on our property, and what we're hoping to do is take the Dedham Alternative Center and retrofit that so that our female offenders can be in Dedham where they should be and get the same opportunity of the robust programming menu that we have for the men. So it's only equitable, because we do have just an extensive menu of programs. If folks are in need of being high school, if they're not at high school equivalency, we could do that. If they're college-ready, they could do that as well. We're also bringing in tablets, something we've never had before. We've never had music, so that's another update, and we feel that allowing people music is not only good, it's good therapy, but it's also behavior modification. So if you allow the inmates to have a Walkman, an old-fashioned Sony Walkman with headphones, and they can listen to their music, if they do something out of line, say get into an altercation with a fellow inmate or assault an officer, spit an officer, something like that, they lose those privileges. They lose their music, and that's something they don't want to do. So it's really a behavior modification tool. And from a security point, we already monitor phone calls. With the tablets, we're going to be able to see the emails coming in and going out. So we'll know what kind of activity our inmates are up to. Are they just inmates to family, you know, which we support, we want to see family reunification, or are they correspondence to maybe a former gang member where they're trying to get somebody to infiltrate the prison and bring in drugs, which sadly, we just saw this past weekend. We had an arrest right in our lobby. We worked with Dedham Police and arrested a woman from Quincy who was trying to bring in some contraband to her boyfriend. So a lot of changes are happening. We think that they're positive changes, and studies have shown that people shouldn't be in isolation. It doesn't make them a better person when they get out, it in fact makes them worse. So we've gotten rid of isolation. We've introduced a lot of therapies so that people can get clean and sober, go back out and lead a productive life. So that's it on the inside. If I may, just briefly, on the outside, you know about our work crews that come out? We also go out to the councils on aging, and we go out to the schools. So for our senior citizens, we've got programs called the Are You OK?, Files for Life, and the Yellow Dot, all free programs that help our seniors stay safe. The Are You OK? program is a partnership with Fallon Ambulance Service. What that does is it's a phone call to their home between 6:00 and 10:00 a.m. If they want it every day, Monday through Friday, we can do that. If they only want it a couple of days a week, we can customize it. Basically, calls them and asks if they're okay. If they're not, we can send first responders, and we work with Chief Sofair and others. We've had seven saves in the 14 months that I've been there. These are people who've fallen, couldn't get up. One woman was in her bathtub for almost 11 hours. So this is a great program for our seniors, and I hope they'll learn more about it. And for the kids, and I'll close on this, because I know you have other business, we have a leadership academy at Braintree, and we have close to 1,000 kids go through there in the summer, anti-bullying programs, an obstacle course, real team building for our kids. We're looking towards this area. I don't have a town specific yet. We're looking in this general area to replicate that leadership academy. So hopefully, I can come back at a later date and update you on that. But this camp is a week, Monday through Friday, and it's only about $190, and there's nothing like that out there. I know I have two teenage daughters, and to get them into a camp is about $900 a week. So these are great programs, and we're also getting out to the schools, just teaching the kids about staying on the right course. We'll bring out an inmate to the schools so that the kids can hear from an inmate if they go off the, you know, it's almost like a scared straight program. And lastly, we offer tours of the jail. So I would encourage you all, as you're out and about in your community, talk to the seniors, talk to the kids. If you want to organize a trip up to the House of Corrections, they will not have to eat our food, but we will give you a great tour, and we think it's impactful, particularly for our young people who are facing a lot of challenges out there right now, especially with this opioid crisis. So if we could do anything to keep the kids on the right track, then it's well worth it. So that's the latest update, and I'm open to any questions, if you have any.
That was pretty magnificent, because you did not look at one note. I keep looking around.
There's more.
I do have a question, which I have two. One is, do you have dog programs in the prison?
We do. Right now, we have five canine officers, and we partner with all of the local police departments. What we're looking to do is there's something called the Golden Opportunities. These are therapy dogs. So we want the dogs up there, and we're looking closely at bringing in a therapy dog, not just for our employees who deal with a lot of stress, but on the weekends, it's very sobering to see the moms and the girlfriends of these offenders come up with a little toddler in tow, and it's intimidating. They're walking into a prison with barbed wire, a lot of anxiety. They're coming to see dad, they don't know what's going on. So if we had, you know, a golden doodle or a golden retriever there, we're thinking that might immediately de-escalate the situation. When we bring the female offenders over to Norfolk, we're looking at equine and canine therapy programs. We're partnering with Dove, Domestic Violence Ended. So a lot more to come on that front. But we've been working with Dove lately for the visitors. Many of the women come up because they're scared not to, to visit the men that are in prison, and we hear those conversations, and they know that if they don't come up and put money, say, on the canteen account, there could be trouble when that offender gets out. So we're working closely with Dove, because this may be the one opportunity that that person, that their partner, comes in to our lobby and they see this information. So we want them to be able to reach out to those resources.
In terms of community engagement, I'm thinking we're kind of in the season of high school senior projects. I do know that one of our high school teachers and football coach, Brian Craby, is somebody who does participate as part of his law class, and he brings his students for tours, which is fabulous. But if you wanted the community to be engaged, because you've talked about a lot of the work programs that are, they're targeted toward nonprofits or toward municipalities, is there a way for, say, senior high schoolers who are looking for a project, is there some sort of a connection that can be made through Milis in any way? And if so, we have a new and evolving town website, so maybe there's something we can connect as well.
There are programs throughout the year. So for example, we just did our first coat drive, where we had about 1,000 coats donated, and we worked with the seniors in area high schools. So we're doing more projects like that. So if the students at Milis High want to participate, we could certainly partner with them. We're also looking at college-age, maybe high school seniors, but probably college-age internship program. We're looking at criminal justice majors, people that want to go that track. We may be able to include high school seniors, but it's a little bit tougher to do that, but certainly, we'd be open to it.
Awesome. I've hogged the show. I'm shocked by that. Do you have any questions or comments?
I don't have any questions, but I did want to thank you for coming tonight, and the programs are pretty exciting, actually. We knew pretty much, some detail, the help that you provided, you and your team have provided in painting these rooms, and it's not something that just happened once. I guess I want to make sure that the people of Milis understand that. And what we're hearing tonight, again, is a permanent and recurring outreach from your office to us, and that's really exciting as well. So thank you for that.
You're very welcome. Whatever we can do to help, and again, for our inmates, it's a two-way street. The municipality saving valuable dollars, but again, for our inmates, it's an opportunity to sharpen their skills and to get a little fresh air and get out and, you know, kind of normalize themselves back into society. It's really part of a successful reentry program.
I'd just like to make a couple of comments. First of all, I have talked with several of the individuals who came here to help paint and work on the landscaping. It's a terrific program, and I applaud you on that. Second part, and they did a great job.
Yes, they do.
Be very clear and very respectful. So I'll say that's very nice to work with them. Second part is, I very much applaud the various programs, helping them to get back on the streets. It may not be 100% successful, but the bottom line is, it's a lot better than what was going on in the past.
That's right.
In the military, I had people, literally, who took overdoses, and we had to deal with the effects of that. But it's great to see people here working to try to help the community betterment. I also like the leadership program. Now, we do a leadership program here in town. Our Chief Sofair does have a leadership program, and it might be something that the two of you ought to talk about so that more of our youth can take advantage of what you're offering and what he's offering. I think perhaps there's some symbiotic relationship that you might form in that case.
Terrific. I'd be happy to work with the chief anytime.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions or comments from the community, from our, yes?
I just wanted to add on my thanks for the work that has happened through the work release program, and it's, having seen the work being done and the individuals coming in, it's been impressive and has had quite a positive impact, not only on the town, but just in kind of having connections and having these folks come out. And I think it is a symbiotic relationship that helps all parties, and certainly, the townspeople get the benefit of the work in the buildings that otherwise we wouldn't be able to do. So thank you for that.
You're very welcome. And what we always like to say is, we're not trying to displace anybody from, you know, a Department of Public Works or custodial position. We really look at it as a complimentary role.
We view it that way as well. Scott?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Scott, you're the 411 unitary. Thank you, Sheriff McDermott, for coming out. You were here when we did National Night Out, great demonstration with the dog. I appreciate what your department does, as far as the sheriff's department, law enforcement in general is a very stressful job, but I think all too often, we forget as communities that you guys are the first responders in any major incident in a community. So I thank you for what you do in your program and in getting the prisoners out. I've seen the painting here, it's very nice, so thank you for what you do.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
So please bring them back our appreciation. Thank you so much for starting our evening tonight, and we hope to see you again.
All right. Happy New Year. Glad you're off to a good start.
Thank you. We are. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And I believe while we're thinking in the spring mode between landscaping and recreation, we have Mackenzie Smith, another one of the, I think, a caravan, a future caravan of high school seniors who are going to come to the community through the Select Board with any variety of proposals and ideas for ways to enhance her town. And so for everybody who doesn't know, if you are in fact a high school senior, and I believe you get extra points if you do this, your project has to actually be pre-approved by the superintendent, because she doesn't want to find out that there were things that you didn't know, that she didn't know, and so on. So what we need to do is just make sure, for every parent who is tuned in, because I'm sure all your high school seniors are watching this with rapt attention, to make sure that if you have a project and you intend to get the extra credit for coming to the town through the Select Board, that when you do so, that the superintendent has directly signed off on the effort, and that there are any questions about the use of any way, in any way of town resources, it's important that that conversation include the town administrator, because the Select Board may be put in a position of only being able to listen to your ideas, we may not be able to act upon it, and that's really what you want us to do. You want us to be able to make an actual decision and act upon it. So while we are having, are we in trouble on the technology front, guys? Because we have a boatload of people who want technology, so.
Oh, there we go. I'm just wondering, how come that? Get something on that?
I don't know. Jim?
All right. It's on that. So we did.
All right, we're a little bit behind, so we appreciate Mackenzie coming, and hopefully we will get the room monitor for the benefit of the people who are in the room to include this board, so we don't have to turn around at the 180-degree. Excellent. Welcome.
Their first time using the technology, so bear with us, people.
Yeah, there we go.
So my name's Mackenzie Smith, and for my senior project.
We can't hear you.
Oh, sorry.
So this is where, public speaking 101. Pull it toward you, all the way. Excellent.
So sorry in advance, I have a cold, so I'm going to sound kind of boyish, because my nose is all stuffed up. But my name's Mackenzie Smith, and for my senior project, I'm fundraising to install a softball scoreboard on the varsity field right next to the building we're in. So my background, I've been involved with softball for my entire life, and I've noticed that through town ball, I've played in Milis, and now I'm at a varsity level as a senior, I've noticed that the varsity team does lack a scoreboard, and it's like, it's different from all the other schools that we've faced and everything. It's just a nice key that you could have at a varsity level. So my scoreboard, it's a little cool, in my opinion, but, so it's estimated to be $5,000, and that includes LED lights, and it includes an app you can download and create on your cell phone, so you can control it, so you wouldn't have to have a box or anything to store, so you can just have it right on your smartphone. It's eight feet by five feet by eight feet, so it's not incredibly big, but it's a nice, respectable size, so it wouldn't be in the view of the fans, but you could see it from the opposite side of the field. And it would be placed behind the home dugout, so as you see in my picture, it's kind of hard to see, right when the red pinpoint, that's where it would kind of be. And there's a little fence that we use for our pitching warmups, and it would go right next to there. As you see in the picture above that, it's a more clear version of where it would be. But this way, by putting it there, you wouldn't, the fans wouldn't be able to be affected by not seeing it, but you could still see it from across the field. So my funding and installation, my goal will be to fundraise the total cost of the equipment and the materials. I am looking for reaching out to local businesses and youth groups to see if they'd like to contribute. I was thinking of reaching out to the youth softball group in the town, because I would permit them to use the scoreboard, because it wouldn't just be for the varsity use. I'd love for them to use it to keep them involved with the sport, because that's a big thing, in my opinion, because softball isn't a very popular sport in Milis, but I'd love to keep it growing. And then this is just my timeline of what I've done so far. So in September, I came up with this plan, and then mid-October, I had to get it approved by my school committee and everything for my English department. And then from October to January... And then, from October to January, I did all my paper writing and like getting up, like reaching out to people, getting everything approved by Karen and everyone. And then, from January to March, that's when I'm going to be reaching out to businesses and trying to fundraise to get all the total costs and figuring out everyone I need to have, so electricians and that stuff. And then, in March, that's when I'd be purchasing the scoreboard itself, and I'd be gathering all the supplies. And I don't like to brag, but I'm going to the Galapagos over April, so I'm going to try and get it done beforehand.
That doesn't sound like a brag.
So, I'm trying to get everything put together beforehand, which is nice, because my season starts, I believe, the first week of April. So, ideally, I'd love to have it all set up by March, but that's in a perfect world. And then, after that, it's just installing everything. So, I was recommended to have some accomplishments. So, sadly, the softball team doesn't have that many, but we're a growing team. So, we've won sectional champions twice in the past 20 years, which isn't horrible, because we're a small town. But since 2000, we have consecually made it to the playoffs, which is a major accomplishment with a town, and we're Division III. So, we're going up against a lot of bigger schools. And being in the Tri-Valley League, it has D1, 2, and 3 teams. So, it's really competitive to compete with a lot bigger of girls.
So, Mackenzie, the slide that isn't here, this is your real-time learning, is the "How Do People Get in Touch With You?" slide for fundraising purposes. So, that's the piece that's missing, and it's a big opportunity for you.
Okay. I wasn't planning on having a GoFundMe page, because my teachers feel like it's just everyone in my class does it for a thing, and they just, I know GoFundMe pages are really big in towns, and I do believe in them. But for my project, I really wanted to get out to my community and reach out with people. So, I was going to reach out to the Middlesex Bank in town, or maybe the Dedham Bank, because they help out with our soccer uniforms and state jackets that we just received last year.
So, if somebody watching at home tonight, how would they get in touch with you? Would they be sending you an email to an address that you're going to share right now?
Yes. So, I can, I can share my school email, so it's really, really weird. But it's M-A-C-S-M-I-2-0 at millischools.org.
Okay, so you would definitely need to get that into the hands, I would say, of Karen, and then we could put it on the appropriate page on the town website. Are you going to be doing some sort of a Facebook page or something to promote this project?
I haven't considered it at all. Like, I've considered it, but I haven't made anything upright. I'm still in like the beginning stages of everything, but I wanted to get everything approved before I jumped in fully to everything.
So, the last question I have, and then I'm going to defer, is whether or not you've had a conversation, and of course, he just left the room. If you'd had a conversation with our DPW director, Mr. McKay.
I haven't, but I've been, I'm planning on meeting him, if not this week, later next week.
And I will say, Mr. McKay is aware that she is doing it, just haven't officially met with him yet, right?
Right. Well, it's town property, and there's electricity, so there's a lot of moving parts with this. So, it's, it may be a fantastic idea, but if the people that have to oversee the construction piece aren't in the loop, then it's going to be hard to execute, I would think. I'm going to defer to my colleagues.
Sounds like a great idea.
Yeah.
Hope you're successful.
Thank you.
I suggest you call Toll Brothers, too.
Okay.
Don't forget them.
Okay.
Tell them we sent you.
Good idea.
I think it's a superb idea. I also think it's a good learning experience, not just for you, but for others. As the chair, Madam Chair, has noted, there are a series of things that make some sense as part of your timeline and part of your experience for putting this together that I think at the end, if you could share that with your senior class and your administration, I think would be very useful for those who follow in future projects, so that they understand, yes, you need to meet with town operations manager, DPW manager, people like that, and how to get in touch, so that others, there are a lot of small businesses in this town, any number of which might be willing to contribute. It won't be a lot. But even if it's a hundred or a few hundred dollars, it's something toward that. And very useful, so congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add that I have known Mackenzie personally since before she was born, actually. She was my, Beth was my neighbor, and came over the first time to greet us with a, with a very big belly and a toddler on her hip.
I've heard of her and envisioned how she played her whole life, like when she was two months, but I would let it go.
Yeah. Her whole life. But I saw she spent many, a lot of time out in the yard playing softball. But it's a wonderful job, Mackenzie, and I'm glad that you approached us. And I think you've done a great job about being professional and working with us. She came and met directly with Mike and I, which were a little scary, but I think you did okay. And I applaud you on working on this. And I'm certainly more than willing to put it up on the website, and you send the information, and we'll try to help you out and get it going. And Mackenzie is just one of a few seniors that's going to be coming to present.
We know. The list is growing.
So, it's a good thing for the community to see what the seniors do. They do wonderful projects, and it's great.
Thank you.
So, we'll be hearing, yeah?
And I just want to add, I think you're doing a great job on this. We did meet with you a while ago. In addition to the DPW director, don't forget to meet with the building commissioner, because this is a sign, so you'll need a sign permit as well. And he can also help you with the electrical permit. Connect the electricity to it as well, so. But just let us know if you need any help, and good luck on your project.
Thank you.
I was actually at a football game last year, and that was when the scoreboard was really decrepit. And everybody, nobody was talking about what was on the field. They were all talking about the scoreboard.
No, we all, as seniors, we all say, that scoreboard's been there for far too long.
Yeah.
And luckily, we just got a new one this year.
I know. It was like, the next week, I was like, wow, that's cool. So, thank you so much for bringing us spring. Hopefully, you will keep all the rest of that SNOW stuff at bay. Sorry, I don't ski. And we look forward to hearing from you. And on your way out, you can shake hands with Mr. Jim McKay, so that you know who he is.
We already know.
Oh, there you go. Excellent. All right. Thank you very much, Mackenzie.
You may want to stay for the next item, which is about softball as well.
Yep. Yep. Next item, up for bids, as they say, is the approval of a grant fund for the, for a proposed softball field renovation project. Mr. Gazinski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the board did receive earlier today some information in regards to a request from the Millis Girls Softball League to utilize funds, grant funds from two different funding sources for a softball field renovation project. The information related to that is in that information. I don't know if anyone from the league is here this evening. Oh, we do have some representatives here. And I know that some of the town officials did meet last week to discuss this. It is, we feel it's certainly a worthy project, something the board should seriously consider for use of these funds. The one question we had on a few of these funds, there were some questions about the scope and the usability of these funds from a legal standpoint. And we did contact town council, who happens to be here this evening. And because one of the large pieces of grant funding, the $50,000, was an earmark from a few years back for playing fields at Oak Grove, and that did not go through for a number of reasons. This was back in 2016. But the town does still have that $50,000 earmark in the treasury. And it would be, we believe, available for a similar project. But we're still doing a little research on that as far as the earmark is concerned. And I don't know if town council has any other comments on that, but I know we've gone back and forth by email, and there were a few other pieces of information we were trying to gather before a final legal decision could be made on that.
Yeah, we're, we're close to feeling comfortable what's, whenever legislative action is in play. And if it was, did indeed contemplate something more specific in terms of Oak Grove, then we should be mindful of that, because when you appropriate money for a specific purpose, it would have to be used for that specific purpose. Some of the documentation that we have painted in pretty broad brushstrokes, so we're comfortable with that. What we haven't done is exhaust all of the due diligence necessary to see if there might be some element of that legislative earmark that might be more specific to the other location. So, we're not quite comfortable enough to fully opine that it can be used for these purposes, but we're trying to eliminate any obstacles to it. Because what we do have paints it broadly enough to give us a comfort level. We just want to be careful.
So, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to invite the representatives of the softball program to introduce themselves, which means you're actually going to have to move closer together and pretend you like each other, so that you can share the microphone. And I guess the question I'm going to ask is, first of all, if you can just introduce this with a very broad brushstrokes. And the question then I would have for a town council is, they're coming to us for approval for use of these funds. Could we, in fact, if, if in fact, the board is so inclined, render an opinion of an approval contingent upon clearance from a legal standpoint? Could a motion like that be heard?
A contingent motion is always, is always fine.
Okay.
And I don't know exactly where we'll look. Probably have to ask one of your elected state representatives to look into the legislative record to see if there's anything further there, or one of his aides.
And Madam Chair, I've already contacted Representative Linsky's office and spoke to his chief of staff, and they are currently looking into the matter.
Great.
So, two gentlemen before us are going to introduce themselves to the town and give us a quick brush. I don't know if you have slides. Do you have slides?
We do not.
We're into slides. Okay.
My name's Michael Rand. I'm president of the Millis Girls Softball League.
And the author of a letter.
Yes.
Michael, each president of Millis Youth Baseball and on the softball board.
Got it.
So, this is a.
What's the hierarchy for those of us who are neither? Is, does one trump the other? Does one report into the other?
Absolutely not. They're separate entities, but we're working together for the betterment of the kids. So, not only softball will benefit from this, but baseball, soccer, and flag football. So, these, these repairs are specific to softball fields, perimeter fencing, backstops, dugouts. So, they're going to prove the safety of Town Park.
You want to tell us the story?
The story is, so each year, there's a, there's a significant effort to maintain the softball fields. So, over the past five years, I've been involved with Millis Girls Softball. We've utilized one of the fields at Oak Grove. In the past couple of years, it's been a tremendous effort for us to maintain or get it ready for the upcoming season. So, at this point, we don't have the resources or the time to continue doing that. So, what we're looking for are three playable fields at Town Park behind us. So, when we started looking at that, we looked, we were looking at some of the safety issues that the fields have. Obviously, the varsity softball field's been redone. The dugouts, the backstop are in good shape. More of the fringe, first base, third base, and outfield fringe, there's a significant grade difference. So, we're worried about girls stepping off or stepping onto one of the grass from the infield mix and injuring an ankle. So, field number two, if you don't have this, this may make it helpful.
No, I think we have it in our handouts, right?
So, that would be field number one I just, I was just speaking about. So, some regrading, some sod work to the perimeter of the field. Field number two is classified as a stone dust field. There's significant issues with the backstop. In fact, the fencing material is, has come apart at the dugouts and the backstop. So, we're also looking at replacing the stone in the infield with clay infield mix and fixing the fringe as well. So, that would be some sod work. So, the third field would be the instructional field that was closest to Clyde Brown. The work would be here, would be adding a backstop or replacing the backstop, adding dugouts or fencing for dugouts, and then reshaping the field to be compliant for not only softball, but baseball as well. Field number four is actually referred to as CISTO II. It's currently being used by Little League. This, too, is in a safety concern with the backstop, the size of the backstop, as well as the fringes, third, first, and outfield fringe. So, what we're looking for is three fields that are functional and safe for the youth baseball and the youth girls, Millis Girls Softball League to use. So, the proposal that we, we came up with, with a local specialty contractor out of Holliston, we had them break it down by field, in addition to some miscellaneous repairs to fencing, as well as the perimeter fence. So, it's not just the fields, it's the park itself. So, we had them break it down into pieces, because we weren't sure what was available for funding. So, we've met with Jim. He approached us about a year ago, said, a group of us, and said that there was some funding available, wanted to know if we wanted to, you know, submit a proposal. So, that's what we've done.
As far as the fields with, in respect with baseball, baseball has five divisions. Excluding the senior division, because they play on a bigger field, we get four divisions. Our majors in AAA, the older kids, play on the majors field and CISTO II. Last year, we had to shut down playing games on CISTO II because of the safety issues. It's in disrepair, and there's no backstop over there. Our instructional and our double A play on the stone dust field and what we used to call the playground field, the one that's backed up to the old playground. The, with the emergence of softball, as you heard from Mackenzie, and the numbers, you know, scheduling has been difficult for both instructional, double A, and now that we lost that field for CISTO II, our triple A and majors. We also, our kids, the instructional and the double A kids are playing on the stone dust and getting scraped, bumps, bruises, and a backstop that is, is pretty torn up, so.
Not only for the youth sports, but obviously, the varsity, the junior varsity softball programs play at these fields. So, this is going to benefit the high school program as well as youth sports. So, Mike mentioned that the number of kids that are involved in baseball, softball plans on having hopefully between 75 and 90 girls signed up this year to play. So, having them at one park is a benefit to us for scheduling purposes as well.
I'm a former softball player. I know I look like an athlete. And so, my question is, how do you all operationally interact with the recreation department in terms of accessing the fields and scheduling them and sharing them across the town?
That's a good question. So.
So.
Who are you, sir?
Jim McKay, Director of Public Works. We had this meeting about a year and a half ago, and at the meeting, there was every, all the players were there, all the meeting players, the soccer, flag football, baseball, and softball. There is, they, they control the scheduling right now.
Who's they?
All the different users.
The clubs.
The clubs. Exactly. They're not scheduled. There's no scheduling. And it's all comes from a scheduling aspect from the high school. When the high school's done using the major field, or if they don't have a JV game, it's used after those hours.
So, I guess my question would be, you know, if we had a council on aging group that wanted to go out and play, or there was a men's league after work that wanted to play, what the coordination, I guess, I'm just asking about the communication, since it's a town asset. I'm just trying to understand how that might work.
We've had that happen before, and they go through Chris, and Chris will then reach out to the appropriate player and schedule that for them.
I just want to make sure it's really easy to navigate.
That's usually on a Saturday, Sunday, that occurs. It's, and we, she does, Chris Recreation, you know, they do rent the fields out for soccer, baseball at different times, and they always schedule it with, through the participants.
Any questions of my colleagues?
I guess I'm confused. The question, as I understood it, was how do we schedule? It sounds like it's kind of an amorphous scheduling process with no one directly in control. How do you schedule these fields?
Well, it's, softball schedules after the high school's done. They come, and they play their night games, their practices. It's not usually used on, Chuck Grant, the athletic director, sends a schedule over of games at the early onset of the season. So, they use the baseball fields, or theirs. They're the only ones that use the two smaller baseball field. The 90-foot diamond is used by the JV team, and they have first preference of it.
Who handles the master schedule?
No one.
So, there is no master.
There is no one. No.
So, it's sort of an ad hoc, take it when you can?
No. No, because again, they, they use, they know what their scheduler. The baseball and softball know what their schedules are, and they schedule around each other's games.
I guess I'm at a loss, but.
So, Millis and the softball and the baseball scheduling right now, like, we can see what, when they're going to be on each other's fields. We have a great relationship between softball and baseball. So, as far as that, the baseball and softball, we know that the high school gets off the field by 5:00, 5:30, so we schedule after that.
Okay, so, it is, it's pretty ad hoc. So, it is, it's pretty ad hoc. You know when the schedules are, but there's no one place...
There's no one master schedule.
...you can look at and say, okay, it's used here, but it's going to be free now, and therefore, we can look at this.
In each website, like, in baseball, there's the schedule, in softball, there's the schedule, but not, there's not one Millis Town Park.
There's not one that we can look at, so somebody could say, oh, it's not being used. I'd like to schedule that time for use by Council on Aging, or something like that.
If the town of Millis has a new website and like to set one up, I'll be happy to...
No, no. I understand that. That may be something that's useful.
Yeah.
That's all I was trying to understand. Thank you.
For summer programs, Chris Frogge last year reached out to our board and asked what our schedule would be for summer and fall use. So, she could, you know, basically find out what days of the week we were using the field for practices. There's no games that are, at the, there's no softball games in the fall or summer at this point, but she does rent the field out for soccer. So, she, we communicate with Chris Frogge.
Right. So, again, if there were a way to centrally schedule, it might make some sense for all of you. Okay.
And you'd be willing to do that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
If I understand it correctly, you're not here because of scheduling.
No.
You're here because the fields are lousy.
That's correct.
Is that right?
That's correct.
So, I'd rather address, not that I don't think centralized scheduling would be a good idea, I'd like to address the issue that you brought up, which is, the fields need work. Now, just correct me, because I'm trying to, I've seen the material, I've added it up, it's $140,000. You have 22. Maybe there's 50. What's the priority? How would you look to, because from my point of view, if we're using, you know, these public funds or funds made available, I'd like to know what the order of things are. And I'd also like to know that when you guys, you gentlemen, propose this, that other users of the field, like flag football and rec soccer, I'd just like them to formally have said, yep, that sounds good to us. So, we're just make sure that we've got all the parties who've had a chance to at least weigh in. And I, believe me, I believe you, you've already checked it, but you well know that it wasn't that long ago where we had a major contentious issue in town about fields. And I'd like this wonderful positive effort that you're bringing forward to get accomplished in a wonderful positive way. That's all.
I'm on the board of flag football also. No socializing.
You're like a czar.
And the fields will help out flag football, and has been discussed in numerous, I can't speak for soccer, but it's been discussed before.
Yeah, but we just got, you know, some written thing says, yeah, we're all for it. And then, what is it?
We can get that.
My question really is, is there a priority here in this list of projects? And I want to make sure that in terms of utilizing public funds, I want to ask the question to town council and town administrator, is this a project that needs to go out to bid? Would we have to execute this? Because as I understand it, from what you've submitted, there's some urgency here. Spring is just around the corner. May not snow again. We don't know. Anyway.
So, if I could just quickly give you a little background on the fundings, the funding sources.
Yep.
You would just mention that the old fields project, in the, when we were just starting that field project, the committee asked the town, previous town administrator, to ask the representative for a $50,000 funding source.
Right.
At that time, 50,000 always seemed to be the number that they were, you know, that he could go and ask for. There was a previous funding of the 50,000 that the playground committee asked two times for two years in a row for the funding of the playground that was at the Clyde Brown that was torn down and rebuilt. When that 50,000 was, when we received that, the second 50,000 of that, and I believe there's 11,000 something still in that funding source also, it was, it specifically says for the Clyde Brown Playground Fund. And what happened with that 50,000, the Playground Fund, the committee that we were all on, we went to the CPA and we got funding to, you know, pay for the whole playground. So, that 50,000 came in after the playground, and there was no use for those funds. So, those funds were going to be kept in, to replace different parts, you know, parts as they break as time went on. Well, as we know, the playground was taken down, it was rebuilt, and that 50,000 left, I think that's a 2014 date on that funding.
Is that the one you're talking about that has about 11,000?
11,000, correct.
Believe that's the case, yes.
Correct. That 50,000, three years ago, the Board of Selectment approved the spending to outfit the new dugouts on the girls' major league softball field.
Right, which was a joint project with teams, the...
Correct.
The families, and it was a wonderful outcome.
Correct.
And this is, we're trying to get in the next step.
That's, that's, so...
This seems to be a little bit bigger, though.
So, in town councils need to know that, but that specifically, I mean, now we have a new finance director, and she's looking at it in a different way of, it specifically says Clyde Brown Playground Fund. But those funds were used for the, you know, the girls' softball field, which I think is appropriate to be, you know, that it was done that way. Her question is, before she releases, even that 11,000 is to assure through, you know, Rep. Linsky and town council, if we can still continue, continue to use those funds in that source. Now, it leads us to the 50,000 that was in question, the same aspect, when...
But then there's the money that the planning board has...
That's what I'm going to get. I'm going to get to that next, because there's three different sources. The 50,000, the previous town administrator was just leaving. When he was leaving, we, as the fields committee, we asked the town administrator to, again, go back and ask for, if you remember, I think, Jim, you were probably here when we were looking at having the Army Corps of Engineers come in, and when we priced it all out, it was going to be using the 50,000 to get the trucks, the manpower, the gasoline, the food, the setup for...
I think it was the National Guard, though.
The National Guard, correct, yes. But it was under the Army Corps of Engineering.
Yeah, they were going to...
They were going to design it and all that. And we were going to use that 50,000 towards that, you know, to build the field up at Oak Grove. There was many discussions on what size field was going to be there.
Yeah.
What we had priced out and what the town, what the selectmen were looking to put on is 11V11 field. And if I remember back at that time, the, both the Oak Grove Commission and the historical commission were not in favor of 11V11 field, that they want two smaller fields.
Correct.
Town administrator left, and that money just sat there. When, I never, I never realized that it was specifically written that those funds would have to be used for Oak Grove. And that's how it's written. If you read what he sent in for the funding source, he sent it in that it would be used for this plan of hiring the Army Corps to design it and the National Guard to come out and do it. Then came the 25,000, the planning board, Nicole's here, she's on the planning board with us, as part of, when we were, part of the decision, we, in the planning board, we felt that, you know, we needed something from Toll Brothers to assist on refurbishing a field. We specifically put in the language that it would not be for maintaining fields. It would be to, you know, update, upgrade, rebuild a field in Millis, recreation field in Millis. Mr. Rand came with the same proposal to the planning board at our last meeting. I think you have a letter that, you know, we voted unanimously to approve that 25,000 with stipulations that we would go back to the selectmen and ask for the 50,000 along with the 11,000. So, that would bring us up to 60-something thousand plus. It was, it's almost, what, 85, 90,000 if you add up the three, three together.
Yep.
There is a priority list of how it would be done. Mr. Rand and myself, we've talked about this. We would have to change these proposals now. They would have to come through the town. They would come through the town administrator. They would have to be rebid, and we would have to get three, two more bids to associate with this to get three bids. Where it's under 100,000, we can do it with just going out and soliciting three bids. Am I correct with that?
Well, I'll check on that. But I guess the, the main question tonight is the, you know, is the board, at this point, supportive of the project going forward, even though in light of the fact that town council and I will have to do a little more research on the usability of those funds? I know the 50,000 earmark, the contract with the state simply states that the 50,000 shall be used for improvements to Millis fields. So, it's pretty, the contract's pretty broad, and that's, that's pretty much as I interpret it. But we, again, in speaking with town council, we wanted to just flesh it out a little more to make sure there weren't any other restrictions that we weren't aware of. And should this move forward, we will have to follow a procurement process. It's town property, it's, it's state money that's coming out, so we'll have to do the complete process. So, I will, I will go back and look at that aspect as well, as far as the requirements. But it's my understanding also that there was some time urgency to this, as far as the yearly schedule to get this done. So, I didn't know if you wanted to touch upon that a little bit.
Yeah.
As far as the timeliness and if there would be a problem if this was delayed at all.
Absolutely. I think there's, there's still some conversation to be had about phasing this to allow sod to take, and I think we need some input from DPW, as well as the contractors themselves that are, you know, have done this in the past. So, to answer your question regarding the scope of work here, so, we've broken this down into, or by field and location here. So, what we're looking for is three fields to be upgraded. So, fields one, two, and three with fence repairs and upgrades would be 96,300. Fields one, two, and four with fence upgrades and repairs would be 95,850. So, three fields, the two most important, we feel, are the varsity softball field, field number one, the junior varsity field, the stone dust field, field number two, and then either a combination of the instructional field, three, or CISTO 2, which is being used by baseball, or not being used by baseball at this point.
Because you can't. You can't play on it, basically.
No. Not for safety, I mean, for the safety of the kids, we can't play games.
Can I just ask about the fence? Because that's an item on here, too. I mean, how, obviously, the fence should be repaired around the whole park. What is the safety risk here of not addressing that, too?
I think that if, I mean, on the elementary board committee, I believe that there was an approval that they will, as part of the project, that they're going to fence the side where the old park road was.
On the right, right.
And this fencing would just go across the front of, as you enter, enter town hall facing the park.
Okay.
And then the other, over the years, we've phased in different types of fencing. The recreation department paid for two of the backstops, the DPW paid for one. We've replaced this, all the side going, is that park road going down the side, near the major league field? That's been replaced within the, so that's not going to be touched. Where the old rose bushes, remember that whole string of rose bushes that were there? You know, we replaced all of them. That fencing is feeling new, so that wouldn't be touched. It's the backstop, more importantly, is over here on the stone dust field. I mean, right now, we have snow fencing, plastic fencing that will stop the softballs, and kids were, as the ball was running through, I mean, your reaction as a catcher, you're going to go get the ball. And we put snow fencing there.
Well, I didn't play girls' softball.
No, I didn't either, but...
I did have a daughter who was a catcher who had the backstop ball on her.
And she would have went, right, and she would have went running, running...
Not recently, since she's well into her, oh, never mind.
Don't worry, I was going to step on his...
She's somebody else's mother.
Is field number four CISTO, just so I, because it's...
CISTO 2.
Why do we have codes? We have like two different names. We can't call it field four, no?
We can, I'll call it field four for now. Yeah, field four.
And it's a scheduling, I mean, that's why you do it. I'm sorry, Mr. Jermaine.
I've seen this yellow stuff that goes on top, is that what you're going to be putting on something like that?
And we could put that on top of it. That's absolutely, that's a good...
That's a safety feature.
Absolutely, absolutely.
This scope of work was, it's a, it's a planning document. Obviously, we, Jim and I have had discussions, we've met, I've met with a contract, one contractor, and this, these are options. And I think the next step here, potentially, if we can go forward with this, is kind of coming up with a scope of work that's, that's right for the town.
Where would you come up with the additional, I mean, additional funds for this at this point? Assuming that what you're asking for gets approved.
I think it's, and then I think the gap is 49,000, if I did my math correctly. No?
So, again, we're looking...
50,000 grant, 25, 25, 25,000 the planning board has approved. 11,000 exists in a fund. Total of that, 86,000. Total of the proposal, 135,050. So, that's a delta of 49,000.
We're looking at three fields. So, the options would be one, field one, two, and three, or one, two, and four with fencing. So, if you break down this, break down this, the first option, field one, two, and three with fence is 96,300. Option number two would be field number one, two, and four with fence upgrades would be 95,850. Now, keep in mind, when this goes out to a competitive bid situation, I think these numbers would come down.
It could go the other way, though.
Well, we know what we're working with.
Well, at least we know what we're working with.
Yeah, yeah.
Where would you come up with the other, say, 10,000? Do you have any idea?
We have not thought about that yet. But we, the softball program has an excellent fundraiser, so I'm sure he would, he would help us come up with some creative ideas if we needed to self-fund some of this.
Well, I think that, at least I'll speak for myself, because we will act at some point, you know. I think the town is trying to step up, too, here. It's not simply through fundraising. I would like to, I mean, I am in favor of this project, as long as we size it properly and move forward. I would like to hear specifically either a sentence or something from flag football, which I think we've already heard, right?
Recreation Department.
Soccer Club of Recreation, just so that we get the full picture here, that there's support for this program, because not only does it address the softball teams, but it is helpful in the bigger picture for everybody who's using those fields. And I want to make sure that also the changes to the fields are compatible with what the elementary school and the, you know, is using them for. I mean, I can't say why I wouldn't, but I'd just like to hear from them, that's all.
And just, and lastly, I mean, we could go to the CPA asking for funds. We wouldn't be able to go and ask for fencing, but we'd be able to go and ask for field maintenance and renovation.
Because they have a component of recreation in their, in their funding.
How do we go about getting letters from the entities? Should they send them to you, or do we collect them?
I would, my personal opinion, be lovely if the town administrator would reach out to these folks, because I'm asking for it, you're not asking for it.
We can do that. We can do that.
And make sure you get the flag football guy.
Yes.
Do you have that, like, football?
Yeah, no, no, it's just...
Jim wants to play.
This is a sensitive issue. I think this is a fabulous idea.
Totally agree.
Let's not have a bunch of, you know, back noise.
Absolutely.
If we hadn't thought about it a little bit, that's all.
What I would love to see in the follow-up presentation, assuming we take some action here, is that all your work that you did in showing us plans and documents are something that the town can see, so you blow them up there, and then it's really clear, and you say, we're going to go option A.
We want to know where the scoreboard's going, okay?
McKenzie's scoreboard needs to show up on there, and I think the other thing is, it would be really easy. Remember, when you're here, you're not really just communicating to us, you're communicating to the town. So, if you guys can, everybody get in a circle, big, deep bear hug huddle, and say, Recreation Department, Council on Aging, any other entities, this is the mechanism, this is how we're going to schedule, these are the blackout times, here's the little chart that's going to go on the town website, so that we're not asking the operational questions, because the reason that we're asking them is because we're trying to be proactive as we start to bring these community resources back online, for whatever reason they haven't been. We want to make sure that they truly are all community resources. And just because I'm old doesn't mean I don't want to play.
We have an adult, they have adult softball playing down there?
We set up an adult softball league.
See? There you go.
Every Monday night. We did it for two months over the summer, so... Every Monday night, and we did it for two months over the summer, so.
Put it on a big master schedule, and everybody will know how it all works, so.
We did have that tonight.
Coming in, that's what I want.
Do we have a motion?
Slow pick.
So Madam Chair, we did have this on, my computer is back there, hopefully for the next presentation, it's upside down, so I can't, something happened with the, Mr. Jermaine may have to take a look at it.
Madam Chair, I'm not sure we need a motion. I think the message is that if you could come back, and our next meeting's the 10th, which still should give us the time, right? If we're going to say a project, by knowing that we're going forward on February 10th, does that give us enough time, or not enough time?
Yeah, absolutely.
So what we'll try to do in that interim is get the two other bids, that maybe something can be approved that night through, for even the contract.
And we certainly are going to need to know whether there's any technical barriers to using these funds.
Absolutely.
So you don't want to do a motion that says we're, I was just going to throw out that we do a motion and say, we're in support of the project in concept, but now the details have to be worked out. So there we go. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Doesn't play softball. So there you go. We thank you very much for sharing this with the town. Everybody get in touch with these guys, they're looking for money, they're looking for labor, they're looking for support, and they're looking for adult players.
Thank you for your time.
Excellent, thank you very much for your time.
Maybe they can use.
Yes, and that's true. You all were here for the sheriff's presentation, too?
Yep.
That's something to think about.
That's a possibility.
Here you go.
Was that a card?
There you go.
Thank you.
And honestly, we, like we said, we'd use them for landscaping and painting, they're great.
They're awesome.
They work hard, they come.
You might also check out also the Army Corps of Engineers, again, because they're, they have a bunch of heavy equipment operators.
Someone was coming to present.
Hi, do you have slides?
Their own equipment, too. Their whole purpose is to train their guys, so when they go into a combat area, they know what they're doing.
Is it Jim I can talk to?
It's sideways on mine. I have a PDF, not PowerPoint.
Thank you.
Yeah, I do.
Darling.
I didn't realize I was actually presenting the sign thing tonight, I was just doing the banner.
Can you rotate a PDF, Keith?
You should have it right on.
Well, I don't. I didn't know I was doing that, please. I was not aware, I thought you should bring a laptop.
What is it on?
I can access it and email it to you.
Can you email it to camberay@yahoo?
I can.
Yeah, if you could do that right now, we could pull it up, just like we did for McKenzie, sorry.
What's the PDF?
While we're doing that, I'm going to jump to Agenda Item Number 2019, which is the appointment of two historical commission members, and now I just have to get to that spot in my handout here. Yikes. And I know I have heard from the chair, Nate Maltinsky, that there's actually going to be a third, but that that person, their paperwork apparently just got in, so let me do this. I think he violated the rule of provide fanatics on last names, so if we blow somebody's name to somebody that spends my life with that problem, I apologize in advance. Sorry, I'm flying through documents here. Do you have it right there?
You don't tape it out, I'll just hold you.
All right. So on behalf of the Millis Historical Commission, which does amazing work in town, they have voted unanimously to request that the Select Board appoint Larry Giagari, no, Giar, geez, I knew I was going to do it. Giar Giari. He is the manager of Fifth Avenue Liquors, and he had a major hand in the very successful Brew Fest event, that ultimately had a fundraising component to benefit this organization, and Rusty, aka Charles Cushman, known to his mother as Charles. And then, I believe, as associate members, Robert Ruggieri, Carolyn McNiff, and Dennis Anderson. It's a little unclear how this is written, and I believe Nate is under the weather and watching from home, so he knows that I might have actually misaligned the specific officer level, or maybe they're all associate member, because it's singular and not plural. So why don't we?
I think there are two, Lauren, I'm sorry, that were.
Yeah, there are.
Sorry, I'm doing.
Larry and Rusty.
Regular, and the other three are associate.
Perfect, okay. All right.
I believe.
Excellent, unclear paperwork, okay.
You can yell at me after.
So Nate, who's watching from home, we're recommending that, you're recommending that the Select Board do appoint Larry and Rusty as full members, he's texting away, and Robert, Carolyn, and Dennis as associate members, with another member to follow. And they all have, oh, let's clarify this, sorry, through to the social media, that is incorrect, they are all associate members.
They're all.
There we go. So, just need an S next time, Nate. So Larry, Rusty, Robert, Carolyn, and Dennis have all been presented, that's a pretty nice, robust add to the Millis Historical Commission, and they would like the Select Board to duly appoint them for the duration of the term, which would be through June 30th, 2020.
To the Yahoo.
I sent it to your.
Any question?
I sent it to Yahoo, I can't get that on here.
No, I sent it to your office.
No, I can't get that on here.
Any conversation or question about that?
I'm sorry, that's what I'm saying. It's camberay@yahoo. If anyone else wants to.
We've got two minutes.
I know, we have two things going on. So we're trying to appoint five members to the Millis Historical Commission as read, and they're all associate members. Do we have any conversation, or?
That's my only question, Madam Chair, do we have a number in the description of the commission?
The answer is, I don't know that.
If in fact there's a specific.
I believe, no, I believe they're under, because what Nate said is, when they appoint the last person, it will bring the commission up to its intended size. But the answer is, I don't know exactly what that size is.
No, there's something wrong with there.
So, and if you don't feel comfortable, we can just roll it until the next meeting.
I don't feel uncomfortable at all.
Okay.
I am having my own technology challenge, I can't pull up the agenda, so I can't read the names.
Today is a not great technology day, we're with a.
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
How about we make a motion as read?
Maybe you can make the motion.
Where is it?
Then I won't have.
Yeah, you can make the motion.
I mean, it's.
I did read it in advance, so I did see it.
Yep, I did.
Well, I'll move then that we recommend making members of.
Don't make this work, don't you worry.
These are associate members, right?
Associate members.
Associate members of the Millis Historical Commission of Larry Giar Gary, I apologize.
I know.
I think it's Giar Ger.
Yes, it's a hard name.
Giar Giari.
Larry, Larry G.
Larry G.
Rusty C.
Rusty Cushman.
Yep.
Robert Ruger, Rugary, excuse me, Carolyn McNiff, and Dennis Anderson.
Giar Giardi.
Giar Giari.
I believe that is correct.
Okay. To the Millis Historical Commission, at any rate.
Second.
So moved in seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Welcome to the Millis Historical Commission.
We did it.
And again, I apologize for messing up the name.
All right. And now, through the table or chair, madame, I would like to introduce the town to a woman who needs absolutely no introduction. This is Debbie Hayes. She is, and it's, bear with me, I'm going to take a big breath now, she is the immediate past district governor of the Lions. She is the Massachusetts District Chair of District 33K, and she is a past president of the Millis Lions, but she is somebody who is a doer in town and makes a big impact. And we're all getting older, and so is the Lions. There are the Lions, because the Lions are here to announce that they are turning 75 this year, and they would like to reintroduce themselves to town, and perhaps offer the town a gift.
Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to come and speak with you tonight. It was a little close, a little close, a little sensitive.
All right, Debbie, all right, we're good to go.
So again, I appreciate your time. I just wanted to give you a quick update, that we did actually make this presentation to the Planning Board on the 16th, that was unanimously approved. The Millis Lions Club will be celebrating its 75th anniversary this February, and as part of that, we would like to gift a new sign to the town of Millis. Back in 1984, we did gift the lovely sign that's been out front for a really long time. So a little bit of history on Millis, the Millis Lions, our club was actually chartered in 1945, we were sponsored by the Medfield Lions Club, and since that time, we've grown from 20 members, upwards, we hover around 60, 62. Anybody who's over the age of 18, and a citizen in good standing, can belong, little plug for membership. That includes our lovely Board of Selectmen, we would love to have all of you. And as Jim can attest, he's been a recipient of our Citizen of the Year Award, and we were very thrilled to be able to give that to you.
I was very honored, believe me, to receive.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the town sign, and the town sign was put, was given to the town as a gift for the centennial, for the 100th Centennial, back in 1984. It happened to also be our 40th anniversary. Over the years, the sign has obviously done a great job of informing the community about the events that are happening in town, and we are open to all clubs and committees within the town, we don't discriminate against anyone, but we do obviously make sure that the messages that are up there are appropriate at all times. The town sign is dying, for lack of a better word. You know, it's taken its toll. The letters cannot be replaced for this particular kind of board. It does require that it is, someone manually goes out in the snow during the winter and shovels a path, and changes the letters. And we have, we're working in partnership with the Leos Club, which is the youth arm of Lions, that's actually in the high school, and they're really great about sending the kids out and getting those messages changed. The messages tend to stay up on that board for about two weeks, and we try to let everybody know that, you know, if there's things in line, we might only be able to keep it up there for a week. But we do try to accommodate everybody in town for all of the important things that are happening. Right now, one of the biggest things is, we have, we're dealing with outdated technology. I'm sure that all of us have seen that beautiful new sign that Medway has, and we're all kind of a little bit jealous. So what we would like to do is actually get something similar to that sign. The, it would look something similar to this, except for the lettering would be white. We were able to work with the Planning Board to agree that we could do a black background with white letters. It would be dimmable, it would be programmable off-site, and the access would also be given to the police department and the DPW in the event of an emergency. You would be, we'll hopefully be able to have three to six lines of text, it will be able to rotate messages on both sides, so we would be able to accommodate lots of things going on in town. And by rotating on both sides, which means that we could have maybe 10 messages going, set on the rotation schedule, where they would be on both sides of the board, and they would just kind of rotate over, so, because right now, we can't, we have to put one on one side and one on the other, and if you're only going one way, you're only going to get half of what's going on in town. So we would like to be able to make it so that multiple messages display on both sides of the board. And, you know, it does, we're hoping that that will increase our community engagement, increase attendance at events, especially for clubs or things like the softball committee we met earlier, who are trying to do a fundraising event. We want to be able to support all of those organizations in town, not just the Lions. And I think that this will be a prettier, better, more attractive, eye-catching piece of equipment that will, maybe will draw someone's attention, who's probably, I mean, there have been people in town who said they've never seen the sign, and so we're hoping that that will change. Additionally, we do want to make this sign, it is hard to believe, right?
Thousand times.
Right. But I think sometimes, you know, you might see it, but then you're not really paying attention, if it's at night, and for some reason the light is out, you might, we might miss it. So this, and most importantly, in the event that, and unfortunately, I have to say this, there were some major catastrophic situation happening in town, where we needed to shelter in place, or there was something happening in the roadway, we would be able to warn people instantaneously. It can be programmed from your phone, so Officer Safaya, Rick Barrett, you know, Chief Barrett, Jim McCaffrey, those people would have access to instantly change the message.
Do not give it to me.
She would simply change the message.
Happy birthday, wife.
Yes. We will still, as a couple, we will still maintain, we will maintain it, we will also maintain the integrity of the messages that are up there, so just, you know, we will still be the keepers, gatekeepers, as it were, of all of the information that will be up there, and it'll just be newer, a little bit more exciting, letters a little bit bigger, we can make things bigger, we can put a little bit more information on there. I know right now we have to abbreviate, and not everybody knows what STLGHL means, unless you've lived in this town for a really long time. So, I, we are requesting, and we're bringing to the Board of Selectmen, that you also approve this black background, white lettering, we're going to keep it in the same housing. The only thing that we may have to do, because of the weight of the sign, is change the four-by-six posts to something that's like 6 by 12, because the sign will weigh in excess of 600 pounds. So we're going to have to, we're going to need a little bit sturdier housing, but the main structure will remain the same. We want to keep that look and feel that we've always had in this town, we just want to, I don't know if Karen can go back to the picture, just within that inside frame where we currently have that, that border for the old sign, we're just going to remove that and put this in its place. It will be a little bit shorter, top to bottom, but it will still hold about anywhere between four to six lines of text. It will, and it will be in white, but we will have the ability to use multiple colors in the event, so if there was an emergency, we could change it to red, it could flash, it could do things to get people's attention, if that was necessary. But in general, that will not be the case. So, that's all I have about our sign.
Wow, I like this, when you have a birthday, we get a present. That's a good gig. My question is, first of all, congratulations, 75 years of an organization that does so much in the town, all the time, quietly, but really important work, so thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Question I have is, is this boosted by a generator in the event we have a power outage?
We're looking into the possibility of actually having it be solar, having a solar component with a battery attached to it, so in the event that we did lose power, that sign would still work. There are lots of cool things that we can add to it, but obviously, that with those come the financial impact that goes along with that. So we're, but we are investigating other options in the event that the town should lose power, that we would still be able to get a message out, you know, if, again, if something catastrophic were to happen, that we would still be able to, you know, get the word out to the town.
And where exactly is it going to get plugged in?
There's power already out there.
Okay.
And so right now, it's an incandescent system that's set up there to light it internally and externally. Hopefully, with these new, with the new LED lights, that will be less of an impact to the town. And if we can get the solar component to it, if it's from priced correctly, and we can afford to do that, then we would be able to put that, that would help to offset that, and it would just run on solar.
And what is the timeframe for installation?
That's based on money.
Ah.
Right now, the cost to put a sign in like this is about $30,000. We would be looking to begin our fundraising efforts immediately, starting in February, and our hope would be to put it in between September and October. We'd like to get it in within, with this year, some, hopefully within six to eight months, before the snow flies. That's our plan. We do, we've had some people commit to some pretty large sums of money, and it would be, it would be great if we can do it sooner. Ideally, I'd love to be able to do it this summer.
Excellent. So what do you need, what are we being asked for, other than to receive a very nice gift?
You're asking, they're asking for approval for the new sign, and to accept, you know, that you would be willing to accept the gift when it is ready.
That's a tough call, right? Would anybody to my left like to make a motion?
Sure, I could make the motion, Madam Chair, make a motion that the Board approve the, I'll call it the LED sign proposal from the Millis Lions, including as described in color and size and whatnot.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to gratefully accept this lovely gift for the town, from the 75-year Millis Lions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries with our gratitude unanimously, and happy birthday.
Thank you very much.
We'll be hearing happy birthday a lot this year, I would imagine, right?
We hope, yes.[1772.23] We hope, yes.
And I think right on top of this is a approval for a sign banner. Oh, I'm sorry, Scott.
I'll be brief. I'm sorry. Scott, 2411, you know, I want to thank the Lions Club. Congratulations on many years. They've done a tremendous lot. This sign will bring a lot of it into the technology that we need to, especially in an emergency. So thank you for all your, the Lions Club's do and everything, including the breakfast coming up, I think, this Sunday.
Oh, thank you. Thanks for the plug.
That would be on our sign.
Our super bowl breakfast for Sunday.
There we go. Would you like to talk to us about a banner?
I would like to talk to you about a banner. Now, this I can't send you, because it's actually sitting on my desktop. But I believe that you were given a copy.
Yes, we were.
And I'm not sure where the cameras are to see. But this is the proposed sign that we'd like to hang for the last two weeks of February across 109, in front of the fire station, between Town Hall and the fire station. It does meet size and, with the size and all the equipment that is required, based on the permit. And we are respectfully requesting approval to be able to do that.
And I did speak with Chief Barrett, who is all in favor, as they are the ones that hang it.
Motion. Recipient of the Milis sign, Milis Lions Citizen of the Year Award?
Sorry, Debbie, so just two weeks you're looking for?
I'm not sure how, well, I think that's all we can do it, right?
Well, typically, the Board in the past approves signage for two weeks. It is entirely up to you. I don't know that there's anything else going up anytime soon.
If it's not in conflict, I certainly wouldn't have a problem.
I mean, February is our anniversary month.
Right. The request is for the entire month. I don't think there's anything else going up, according to the chief. So that's up to you.
Well, then, I would make the motion in grateful, in gratitude to the Milis Lions for the club, which is celebrating its 65th anniversary, to display the banner from February 1st to February 28th, 2020, which again, marks the, the month of the anniversary of the Milis Lions.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second there.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Is this your final art?
No, we're gonna, I'm gonna tweak it. I just.
This is a leap year.
So you go to the 29.
Deb.
You gotta get it to the 29.
I have, I have, no, I'm giving this to you. It's my gift.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And to all of the members of the Lions, current, past, and future, since this is definitely a boom recruitment here.
We hope to be adding six members from this board.
All right. There we go.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
So it's, it's 8:10. So we are a half an hour behind. So we'll do some catch-up now. I think this is a fairly important item that's been worked on for a while. So as a bit of background, while Mr. McKay gets his slides up, is that, Millis, as you know, is, all right, hang on. We've got to get the technology deal here.
I'm like, who are we fucking?
We can't have five meetings at once. It's too hard.
I'll leave that to you, Mike.
All right. While the gentlemen are setting up, a little bit of history. We have a fabulous water supply, but we have limited sewer capacity. And everybody at this table and the developers who are in the audience wanted us to answer the question that we wanted answered, which is, could we please understand how we get to the calculation of sewer capacity, and what is it that we can do to change what it is? And so we will have a presentation jointly provided to us by Mike Carter, who is the President of GCG Associates, which is our engineering firm under contract to the town of Milis. And alongside him will be Jim McKay, our Director of the DPW. And so they have the floor to explain the regulatory environment, what Milis' current standing is. And I do believe, Mr. McKay, you will be putting this deck up on your department webpage.
It's already there.
It's already there. Perfect. Mr. Carter, thank you so much for your patience. And you have the floor.
Because I'd like to just quickly stop. Madam Chair, an update. At our last meeting that this was discussed, we were, the Board and some of the engineers and developers asked about the 110 per-bedroom capacity level and the contract with the Charles River Pollution District. I have forwarded you at that last meeting, we forwarded the letter that they still will require us to use the 110 number. And there's no waiver on that. So what I think, what I'd like, I'd like to do is-
Madam Chair, could I just, I want to make sure I understand the source of this, whether it's Mr. McKay, Mr. Carter, Town Council. What is the specific provision of what document that says this is what we have to do?
It, well, it's twofold. It's in the MastEP regulations that we-
Well, that point is, okay, there's a regulatory provision.
Correct.
That says that when you look to calculate the-
Flow.
The flow, you have to use this, this model for any public sewer anywhere. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I'd say it's correct.
So the, the issue at hand there is, my question, I don't mean to short-circuit this, but I do want to get to this point.
Pete, this one's in color.
Is there an appeal procedure? Is there a proceeding in front of the DEP or whomever, where they, the applicants or the municipality or the Pollution Control District can go to them and say, in our case, based upon this data and this information, we believe that you should approve, pick a number, 70?
Maybe I can give you a little history. I've actually attempted to do this. I do a lot of work for the DHCD, Housing Authorities in the state. And they have a lot of septic systems that require groundwater discharge permits, which require going through this process. And a lot of these housing authorities have flows that are, I have 20, 30 years of data that I've gone to the DEP.
Yep.
And said, it's only a third of what it's, you're asking me to do. And in two instances over the last 18 years, I've asked that. I've been there, met with them, and they stick hard to their numbers. I have not been successful in trying to get that waived. So my, my general consensus is that it's not going to happen.
And then, the second part of the question would be that since this is something that is being, we not only have a regulatory issue here, but we have a contractual issue. Now, I'm assuming the contract with the Charles River, Charles River Pollution Cont, I hope I do better than I did with Larry's name.
I know.
Charles River Pollution Control District requires us to use this, or some, some variation of that. Is that correct? Because what I'm-
That is correct.
We're looking for is where do we push back?
So, in, in our permitting process with the Charles River District, we send over a form, whether it's a one unit, two units, up to, upwards of the 70,000 gallons for the Glen Allen project.
Right.
We send that, how did we come to that 70,000 gallons? It's per bedroom. They provided Mike the numbers of how many bedrooms. He came up with the 70,000 gallons. If Dan's here also, when Dan's building a development, he will provide us with how many bedrooms in, in the development. It will use that number. So that's, that's a permitting process.
Right.
The Charles River, they, and I shouldn't say they don't care, because that's not, that's, that's not right. They are, when we get into the presentation, you're going to see the flow. That's what their main concern is.
The flow of the presentation, or the flow of-
The flow of the, the sewerage.
Sewer.
The sewer going to the, to, going to the, into the system. As long as we do not exceed our flow on a daily basis, which we-
The actual flow.
The actual daily flow.
Right. Okay.
We, we're, and we're well below that by almost 293,000 gallons. We're going to find out very shortly. So, but in permitting, and you'll see through the slide deck, you're going to see that this, before it's actually used, they have to use a number to hold us accountable to, to keep that-
For the flow in?
To the flow in.
Or for the future?
For the, well, it's both, because we're, we're looking into the future. If we permit, if the Board permits a development, they're permitting 40,000 gallons, or 18,000 gallons for this development. And until that, that permit actually gets online, that development gets online.
Right.
You're not going to know what that number is until, we've done tests, we did a test. Mr. Jermaine asked us at our last meeting to, to document the flows coming out of the Charles River, not the Charles River, Glen Allen.
Right.
And we did that for a whole month. And we know that there's 25 units sold. As of January 1st, there was 25 units occupied. And some two, some three bedrooms, and there's a breakdown, I believe, in that. And we know that the average daily flow for that, for 25 units is 1,700 gallons. So we know that's far below.
Right.
What, what the number is. So as more units get tied in into the system, we'll, we'll be able to alleviate, or the Board will be able to use some of that gallons.
Okay. My last question, before I get out of the way here, is, the earlier exhibit last time showed a neighboring town had actually authorized in excess of 100% of the capacity allocated to that town. So what is the implication for them? As I, based upon your answer, it's nothing until they hit that limit.
That's it. Bingo.
So there's no enforcement of this.
There's, not until, until-
If we over-permit, there's nothing to, no one's going to come to us and say, stop doing that. What they're going to do is they're going to say, once we go over our allocation, they're going to say, stop sending it.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
That's exactly-
That's what I want to know.
Couldn't have said it better. You agree?
Yep.
I would say, just with the possible exception, Mr. McCaffrey, that when we do more complex permits.
Yep.
One of the box-checking exercises that we require is that all that stuff gets all cleared up.
Who's we?
Well, when we help the permitting boards.
Okay.
With their decisions, we would have them provide an assurance, so that we're not in exceedance. We probably would actually cover it well in advance of that during a public hearing.
Right.
It's more like buy rights that accumulate might be harder to track. But on larger-scale permits, there's a lot more analysis, peer review, and redundancy that we can build in, so as we can keep an eye on the store.
Well, yeah, it's like the 10-unit project versus the 100-unit project.
Again, it's the buy-right stuff that's harder to track. But even in a subdivision context, if we felt that we were, it was pushing at the bounds of what we either wanted to or could provide, then there's, there's at least a mechanism in a public hearing and peer review and other things where we could study that in process. And then there's conditions of approval that we can put on and afterwards to make sure that Jim and Mike or whoever else is looking at it from a technical perspective is going to be assured before a building permit goes-
Yeah, I'm not looking for a foolhardy thing. Let's just close our eyes and go forward. I'm just trying to get a sense of the dynamic of this, because I just want to get a feel for it. Okay? I'll back off now.
If, if I may follow up on that, when you say the bounds, the physical bounds, is what I'm assuming you're talking about. So if we, as a Board, were to approve something that went beyond the projected bounds, but we feel quite confident it's going to be below the physical bounds of reality, we're taking a risk. But we would propose that we would want to take that risk perhaps, and what are the legal ramifications of so doing?
Right. Again, you, you bump up into the physical versus the, the kind of theoretical all, well, we've had some conversations inside meetings, and I think Mike and Jim can talk to this, and actual flow and permitted flow, and where we, where we go from there. But yeah, there's risk-taking exercise.
Right. I guess my point is, we understand we're bumping up against the permitted, proposed potential risk at this point, because of these limits that have been imposed upon us of 110 gallons, or whatever that number is, per bedroom, whatever. But if we choose to say, based on what we're now seeing for the actual physical outflow, to take the risk to permit some additional that would go beyond that, we know that we're going beyond the permitted in terms of projected flow. But we don't believe we're going to come anywhere near close to the actual. And if we never exceed that actual, what's our liability?
There is mechanisms in the contract that, of a fining process, that, that we would have, that the Board would have to, they would issue to the Board.
For exceeding, or for a permit?
Not, not the permitting, for the eventual exceeding. So when you take, when you, when you take the, the danger of, over, I mean, I, how, how high are we going to go?
Well.
What's the, what's the threshold? You know, we, when, when you look at all the permitting process, I mean, you're not talking, I mean, no matter how, 70,000 gallons, what are we going to get, 20,000 gallons? What's the, I mean, we're, no matter the, what, how we, we look at the situation, we're in a dire straits right now of what the decision's going to be made, of we need to go someplace else. And, or we have to come up with other thoughts of how we're going to take care of future sewer, whether it be private. It's a, you know, are they going to build a, you know, a developer-used, built-its-own，在 package treatment plant? And it's probably the most successful one that never has a problem with it? You know, do we look at, you know, encouraging future developers to look at that type of system? Or do they just go straight out and build, you know, septic systems for their homes?
I guess what I'm looking at-
Can I just interrupt for a second, since we have, we do have a real, I think a lot of these questions are going to be kind of answered in the flow of a presentation. And I just think for Ben, for the benefit of everybody, it would be probably helpful to-
They're good questions. They're, you're asking-
I'm not disputing the question, but I think you're going to find them highlighted.
Absolutely.
Sir.
So, just interrupt me at any time, if there's any confusion. I'll try to go through in a nice, methodical way. So, so as everybody's figured out, everybody measures flow by gallons per day. You're, you're restricted by how much you can do. And then the other thing that we haven't really talked a lot about is infiltration and inflow. The town has been working with higher GCG over the last 12 years. And we've been picking away at finding where there's leaks in your systems. And we'll talk a little bit about more of that. So there's two types of inflow, I and I. Infiltration is water coming into the pipes through groundwater, or coming into manholes, or, and inflow is basically, if it rains out, snow melts, it goes in a manhole cover. Biggest thing in most towns is sump pumps. And basically, groundwater goes up. You're not supposed to have a sump pump tied into the sewer. It is, they are. And Milis is not unique. And if you actually looked at the flows on a daily basis, when you see a rain event, that two-week period after that, your, your flows are substantially higher than they would be on an average day. And those, and those numbers take into account your, your average daily flow. So it can escalate it for a short period, but you also have a max day. So those are the two main, main items with respect to flow. We all know Charles River is where you discharge your sewage to. You're under an agreement with them, and you're limited, I mean, you're limited to basically 628,000 gallons per day permitted by them. That's your average day. And then your max day, which is the day that when it starts raining, and there's snow melt, and you have inflow, is 1.46, 1.4 million roughly. And that's, that's for the day that, like, for, I always use the example, Super Bowl Sunday, there's a lot of parties going on, there's a lot of use of sewage and water. And so that's when you get your max, your days go higher than your average. And that's, that's, most people can relate to that. You're obligated to comply. And as we just discussed a few minutes ago, is where, where do you stop issuing permits is really what the question is. And when does a town feel comfortable with it? Let's see. And so this just shows, this slide shows basically that the towns that are participating, part of the Charles River Pollution Control District, and Milis is obviously being one of them, it's located in Medway. Okay. So, this, this one is basically, we have a lot, you, you'll see in a future slide, but you have a lot of flow that has not been connected, houses that have not been connected to the system that are permitted. And that means they're just on the books that you've either given someone rights, or someone has paid betterments to have that right to connect. And it might be a developer, it might be a resident in what's known as Area E, which is Exchange Street, Orchard, part of, not, not Orchard Glen Allen, but Old Orchard, Ridge Road, in that area. The ten of this slide is to, just kind of familiarize people. The town owns the sewer that's in the street, which is the left side here, basically at the property line. The town's right-of-way, your frontage. The town operates and maintains that sewer. And that's where we've done all our I.I. work, that we've done for the most part. We've looked up some sewer service lines, and we've fixed some sewer service lines. In the last two years, I think we've replaced about 30, 30 sewer services going to the edge of the town, the person's property, because we found that there was a cracked pipe, or that all of a sudden, there's water coming in there. Once you go past this white dash line, now you're on the homeowner's property. And that's, that's the area that really hasn't been investigated a lot. And that's, that's the area that really hasn't been investigated a lot. But when we hammered all the sewers, we, we look, we kind of can go up the sewer services. We've gone up some of them to see if they're okay and identified areas where that need to be repaired. Yeah, we have repaired, we've gone in and repaired some of these. And what that does is that takes water that's going into, clean water, we'll call it, going into your system, groundwater, removes it from your average daily flow. We found one last year at the, it was a water service that was jumping approximately 35,000 gallons a day. And you could actually see it on the, your recordings at the, you know, the flow meters that it got reduced shortly thereafter and it made a substantial difference. So that freed up, we'll say, 35,000. And then probably the biggest thing that I think is most important here in trying to remove II, infill, inflow at this point is right here, the sump pump. No one wants to go in and tell someone to disconnect the sump pump. Every town that I work in struggles with this. We've worked at towns where we've gone into the home, gone to the residents saying, are you connected? And try to help them unconnect and find a way that they can solve a solution because they're not allowed to actually be dumping clean water into the sewer. And you, the town in Milis doesn't have any method at this point how to have, address that issue. And it's probably one of the most complicated because it affects individuals in their private property. We're, we're spending most of our time in the public ways, public property.
Just to be clear, that's a sump pump pumping into the sewer.
Yeah.
Not a sump pump putting water into the backyard.
That, that's correct. It's, it's, if it's connected in the basement to a sewer.
Sewer line.
Yeah.
Then we're getting the benefit.
You're getting the benefit, yeah. And it, you do have that because we could tell by areas, all of a sudden there's a spike in flow during rain events.
I just want a homeowner who has this thing exiting to the wrong, to the right place to suddenly.
Yeah, if you have it going out your backyard into across your yard, that's, that's what, that's really what should be done.
That's what should be done.
Okay, gallons allowed, gallons per day allowed. We talked about is your 628 sewer reserved. You have permitted Glen Allen, you have other, all group of permitted areas. And what's left over is your, your balance. So right now, your average daily flow, oh, we'll just wait, I'll just jump ahead. I know all these numbers by heart. I think we just talked about the mandated 110. There's not much leverage in changing it, at least if someone has the ability to do it, I'd be more than glad to hear it. I've unsuccessfully attempted twice. Okay, now to the, the real numbers. So top number you see on the right side is what you're permitting, 628,000 gallons a day. What we did is, the next number down says.
Can I just interrupt you for a second?
Yeah, please do.
The $235,000, $235,000 gallons per day is the excess that we are paying for.
That's correct.
We pay the Charles River Pollution Control District for this excess. So the existing users are paying for this excess capacity, which we apparently wisely decided to do a number of years ago. Otherwise, we wouldn't be talking about any of these developments. So we are paying for this right now.
You pay for 600, town pays 628,000 gallons. Whether you put one gallon in.
Or 627,999.
Correct. And that's, that's an important point.
Yep, thank you.
Then the next number down is 393,000. What is that number? That number is, we took an average of the last four years on a, on a daily basis, and that's your average daily flow. And that's, so that's kind of a floating number because we're removing II. This permit's coming online. And if you actually looked at the three out of 2018, which was a relatively wet year, you had, your average was at 415, I believe, right?
Right.
415. So that number's included in this.
Including that hot year.
Yeah, it was just, there must, you know, you go analyze it to death.
And it was also that 40,000 gallons.
Yeah.
On the daily flow.
Yeah, 40,000, that's correct. So, and as you indicated, your balance available to send to Medway, Charles River is 235,000 gallons on an average a day today.
But the, the, I will call it the, I don't know if he's the right term. The expected analysis would be that we would not permit more than 235,000. I mean, that's really what.
For actual, yeah.
Well, for permitting, because the 235 is just a guess. Well, it's, it's what, it's what the capacity is, but whether or not the permit will produce that amount is an est, is, is not going to happen. I mean, that's the frustration, as you know, that's not going to happen. If we permit 235,000 gallons per day, we can get them all installed and everybody's up and running, we'll end up with 100,000 gallons of excess capacity.
Fair. Yep, that's, that's fair.
That's, but we won't know that until all of them are in.
We, we know that most likely it won't be 235.
It won't be 235.
It'll probably be about 60% of that.
All right.
And that gets to the point I was.
That there's 100,000 that's sitting there.
Exactly.
And we're here tonight, I'm here, and you, we've been doing this analysis because we're right at that threshold.
We're right there.
Permitting wise, we're at 235.
For the permits that we have out there.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't remember.
This is, this, I believe with this slide, it just states, but Milis has promised more sewer use. I think that's what we're going to get into. The next slide's going to show that the permitted and pending amounts.
So the next, the next slide is, again, we'll go back, now, now we're focused on the 235. That's what we have, we know we have, we can add to, we're paying for. And so what the 218 or 28 below there represents is that's what you've actually, the balance of what you've permitted. So what we did is, we went through all your permits since, we've been tracking it since 1993 roughly. Prior to that, I don't know, can't speak for that. So that includes all your betterment projects that the town did, which were four projects. That includes Glen Allen, that includes a list of, a significant list. And the balance that are not connected is about 218,000 gallons of permitted flow. So you're, you have about, you have basically 22,000 that you could permit going forward.
Without running afoul of the.
Without exceeding.
I think, I'm sorry, let me just, the 22, because unfortunately I made these slides incentive to Mike without much. So the 2248, we're going to find out further, what's promised is, is the word that, that we have three other projects that the board has not approved yet.
Right, right.
So they're, they're coming. We have the, the developer, one's the 40B, but I think you're going to hit that in the next slide. Do we just, it's just another permitted.
So, so before we go, go right to that, this is, this is the list of projects that represent the 218. Kensington Place, Dover Road, Eden Street, Acorn Place. And these people, these Hickory Hills, they're all connecting. These are all pretty much the, all the way down to Orchard Street, I would, I'll call them private developments done by developers. They, they're building houses, they're connecting. And that number, 218, is reducing every day. And actually, of that 218, it represents that we've already taken out 25 units from Glen Allen, Toll Brothers. That's already come off the books because it's in the system now.
Well, it's come off the books.
Come on the permitted side.
It's in there, it's in the flow now.
It's in the flow.
Right.
But it's a, it's a lot less going in there versus what was permitted for 25.
How long do we have to wait until we can attribute, is it a four-year?
No, the four years is just what we took as an average. So it, this is a, this is like a moving target. And you, the most important thing is to make sure that you don't exceed that 628.
So, but in terms of having some level of confidence on the actual versus permitted flow, how long of a control group in terms of months do you need to kind of have a feel for what's coming out of that particular unit?
I, I would say, what, a season? I would say a full season of, of, a spring season of, of the Glen Allen as they tie, you know, 25 more on. You know, the Acorn Place has already sold 13 units, that's another over 55 development, but that's in this. I, I think we're going to start to see, I think they're passing papers on one soon. So I think that in each one of these stations, luckily, they have their own station and that we can actually go out and get a, a count on to show that this 44 units, he's only, you know, he was permitted for, was it 30,000 gallons? But in all actuality, you know, not the place is completely built out. I mean, it may take a couple, you know, a year or two to get that firm number, but we can project over the next year or two of, of what usage is going to be on an average basis.
So we're seeing the benefits or the.
Correctly, right now.
Those connections, not quite in real time, but the lag time isn't that significant.
No, no.
One of the things we, as Jim indicated a couple of minutes ago, we, they monitored the new pump station at Glen Allen for a period of, I think, three weeks. Every day they took a measurement. And we, we knew there's 25 units, that was 54 bedrooms. And we did an average daily flow. Now, that, that's not a single-family home, first of all. They're more over 55, so the low, numbers might be lower than a single-family home. But just to give you an idea, we're carrying 110 gallons per day for that bedrooms, 54 bedrooms. The full, the average daily flow coming out of there in a three-week period was 55 gallons per bedroom.
It's half.
So it's half.
It's half. But what I'm, what I was going to ask is, this is 218, that's 17,000 gallons different than what your original gallons per day available was. Of that 17,000, what was the permitted? Because now we know what the actual is, 17,000. How much was permitted out of that 17,000? Was it 34,000 or was it 31,000 or 28,000 or what?
Where are you getting at 715?
Well, you're telling us that your, our current unused is 218. You told us that our gallons per day at the moment was 235. The difference is about 17,000 gallons. So you're telling us, I think I'm interpreting it, that recently we suddenly began using 17,000 more. Is that correct?
No.
The 2, the 235 is what you have available.
Available.
Based upon what you actually discharged to Charles River today. Your, your 218 is what you have permitted to different.
At 110.
At 110 to different developers, to people who've paid a betterment. So that's, that's just what you've permitted. The 235 is what's available. That, that, they're two separate things.
Okay.
And as, that 218 will go down as people connect, as.
Right, and the 235.
Will, will start shrinking too, but it won't be a linear, it won't be a.
That's what I'm trying to get at, is what is that relationship?
So it's going to, you know, it'll probably be like, not half, it'll be like 60%.
60 to 70%.
So for every 100 you take off, it'll probably be 60 to 70 gallons.
I was just wondering if you had any statistics for the last month or two or anything?
Well, that, overall.
Of the overall?
No, I haven't looked at individual.
Never mind.
Okay, moving on. So as, as indicated earlier, there was a line item for future coming projects. Basically, there's a 40B on Union Street and 1344 Main Street is another project. So that's approximately 22,400 gallons that are going to be coming before you. Is that fair to say? That's correct. So that'll bring you right up to, you know, just above your 235,000.
Let's call it 100%. Give or take a net.
Yeah, 100%, okay.
Can I just add one thing to the, these two numbers? The only thing that the, the board has in front of you, we have a, the developer for 1344 has already submitted the plans, not plans, but the, the water and sewer connection fee. He's already, and we're just waiting, we were waiting till this was done before we proposed probably at your next meeting for his 4,000 gallons. That's why it's not, it's not, you haven't permitted that yet.
It's just promised, right.
Yes.
It's already been here.
Right.
To talk about it.
So moving on, betterment's paid, stubs available. So as I said earlier, the town did four projects since 1992. And doing those projects, they were betterment projects. The homeowners have paid a betterment, some are probably still paying a betterment. Not everybody is connected in those four projects. And the balance just sitting out there is 44,701 gallons permitted that someone could come in today and say, I'm going to connect. They'll pay the sewer connection fee, but, and then they already have, you know, it's not going to hurt you. Problem is, some of them are, there's, there's, some of these projects are 10, 15, 20 years ago. People aren't connected.
Can I just ask on this because in the material you submitted earlier, the details? We're talking about Area A, B1E and Phase 1A.
Yep.
Is that right?
That's correct.
So we have 41,000 gallons committed to these areas.
That's correct.
Right? And if I'm not mistaken, four homeowners, based on this, have actually connected.
Four homeowners since I last.
Since we last looked.
Last looked, which was last April.
Okay, so in the last year, four connected. But therefore, if that's the average pace, this could take 20 years. And this capacity is sitting out there.
Correct. And basically, probably what happens is they don't do it until their septic system fails.
Or they want to sell the house.
Or they want to sell the house.
In which case.
They need to, yeah.
They want to get the, because it's, it's the hookup fee is what we're talking about here.
Yeah, and it's, the hookup fee's cheaper than a septic system, I guarantee you that.
I would say that is definitely the case, since they've already paid for the betterment.
Yeah. And some of them were done in 92 and.
Right, long since paid. Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that said, we're going to make a few recommendations moving forward. The first one would be to, to monitor these updates, which, which I think we're all on board at this point. We've started it, we've been monitoring them for a long time, but to pay closer, you know, where you're, you're reaching your 235,000 permitted number, support to monitor and make the, you know, not go too far out there before you realize, oh, I could be in trouble and you get yourself in trouble. I mean, I think you have a couple of things there. One is like you just indicated, these people aren't connect, there's 44,000 gallons.
Well, but the large projects, Acorn, Glen Allen, they're going to connect.
They're connected.
Because the, these new homes have sewer.
Right.
So the pace of sale will start to accelerate. The folks who are living along the extensions are not going to go any faster than they did last year or the year after.
Right.
Because that, you know, unless we're talking about the fact that the septic systems are aging and therefore eventually, you know, we all know that it's, the system is going to need repair or whatever. Okay, so the, but the pace is in the, for example, the Dover Road Residence, which is the assisted living facility, which is, the last time I looked, is, is no longer just level ground, it now includes mounds of dirt. But that's 16,500 gallons that may come.
Soon.
Soon or, I don't know, I mean.
We anticipate coming soon.
But it'll come when that project is done. We're not going to have to wait for people to sign up.
Right. Like, like for example, you see Farm Street Extension, Cedar Street Extension. Those were areas that the developer put a sewer down the town's street. Those, they're only connect, those people have the ability to connect. And generally, they're more like in the betterment type project. They'll go connect.
They didn't pay for the betterment.
They didn't pay for the betterment.
They have gratis in front of them a sewer line.
Right, and they're not rushing to connect unless they need to, is what, see. You probably have like 60, 70,000 gallons that are of that type, that be the betterment or, you know, that is going to sit there and it's not going to dissip.
It's going to sit there.
They're not going to show up tomorrow and connect. So that's a, that's kind of like your factor of safety, we'll call it, that, okay, I got 70,000 gallons that.
Well, that's the good news and the bad news. If you over permit, you've got to count on the fact that these folks are not going to sign up.
Well, but you also can look at it, you can over permit and say, at most, they're going to be at 70% of the permitted, of the permitted, which is the projected flow.
Well, the faster we get people signed up, the better.
Yeah.
At the same time, the slower they sign up, the better.
Well.
Depending on who it is.
I think the hookup is the key.
Right.
That's coming in.
All right.
All right. Number two, establish a policy with timetable to mandate sewer hookups. And I think that's more related to going forward. I mean, I don't know legally if you can go back. You know, we have four projects out there with betterment with no timeframe. Some towns have a like five-year morat.
You can go back.
You can go back, okay.
We could mandate it. No one's grandfathered into the, I don't want to connect.
Okay.
It's not a zoning bylaw that we would be passing, it would, it would be a general bylaw. And you would obviously then contemplate phase ins and all kinds of other rules and exceptions that, you know, to make sure you're doing it equitably. But yeah, you can mandate it for existing, doesn't have to be prospective.
Okay, and then one other thing to consider is going forward. What timeframe do you, do you want to put a timeframe on and what is a timeframe? I know like some towns, it's like sewer goes in front of your house, you have five years.
Right.
Connector, and you will have to connect on betterment projects, actually. I know, I believe it was the town of Billrick, we used to do a lot of, we do work in there. It was like five years and you have to be connected within five years.
You have to, you have to connect within five years?
So those are things that you probably want to consider going forward on your future permits, you know. Here's your permit, you know, as you indicated, if a project sits around for 10 years, because the finances. because the finances don't work, when do you, when does he come off your book?
What will happen then is a sewer system-initiated improvement will fail. Because the people will come to town meeting and say, "They're going to force me to sign up."
Yeah.
So we're not going to support it. I mean, it's happened already.
Yeah.
But I, I think in the language that Town Council sent, I don't know, is that...
Yes. We have material on some potential bylaws.
As much as I read it, I don't think it would have to be a town meeting vote, would it?
For the mandatory connection?
Yeah.
Yeah, you would want a bylaw for that. I mean, there are other elements that if it's part of a project that's soup to nuts, that could be in the other permitting documents where you could compel it, a new subdivision. But for existing stuff out there, I wouldn't feel comfortable, well, let's put it that way. You could do, a Board of Health could do a regulation which has the force of law. So you could probably skirt town meeting a little bit. I'm more comfortable in that Board of Health doesn't cover sewer. They could, it's a little bit of a stretch rather than the sewer commissioners. But if we're running all this through sewer commissioners, you'd probably want a bylaw. You could do a stopgap through the Board of Health on grounds of, some grounds of health-related issues, but it is more of a stretch.
So going forward, the Planning Board, they went permitting, well, the Select Board actually does the permitting for water and sewer. So the Select Board could state if a developer comes, "I'm going to do this in phases." So we could put a time limit on Phase 1, 2. If you're not connected within two years, then, you know, you could lose your second phase of your capacity then.
Yeah. Through, again, perspective permitting, there's all kinds of assurances, including saying, "We'll give you this, but you have to connect in so much, you know, such a period of time." So it could go in both directions, or you lose it, or you have to use it, you know, tie them to it. So you have that authority as a permit granting for everything that's existing, that 44,000 and then the additional ones, that's where a bylaw comes into play.
Okay. Moving on to the next slide. It talks about developing partnerships, buybacks, treatment plants, not ratepayer expense. It's, one of the things is, I know that we did a study on the town's behalf to try to see if we could put small treatment plants in. We went, spent a significant amount of time looking at different areas. And that's kind of how, in the end, it resulted that you ended up buying the sewage.
More capacity.
Capacity.
Best answer was capacity at Charles River.
Yes. Because it just became, made more sense to do that. You have done that. I don't think there's really anywhere ideal in Millis to do this. You, a developer certainly could, as indicated, someone said earlier today. You know, is it better for a developer to do individual septics or to do? And I think Glen Allen was a good example where they tried, attempted to do it and actually they were ready to do it and then they took your sewer capacity.
Well, but going back to the commitment by the sewer commissioners to find a way to relieve the ratepayers from paying for the 240,000 excess gallons, which we weren't using. So it wasn't done, and it made sense in a number of ways, the development, but it wasn't done in an effort to use all our capacity. It was to get a way for our ratepayers to get the benefit of sharing the burden with other ratepayers. I mean, and you know, you're talking about 236,000 gallons, which was the permitted flow. Glen Allen is 71, so it's not even, I mean, it's not, it's less than a third of what we're talking about here. It's the other developments as well, the biggest one, which also is the biggest opportunity in the sense, the faster they go getting those 55-gallon people in there, the better off we are.
Yeah.
And the same could be said for Acorn. Okay.
And one last thing that we didn't have a slide for was, you know, the infiltration inflow. It's in the, I think your town pursues that. I would recommend you keep pursuing that. You know, we found all the easy ones at this point.
Right.
Now it's kind of like trying to find those areas and bases that, it's a program you've had for 12, at least 12 years with us. And I would recommend you just keep proceeding with that, because that frees up...
But that has saved thousands of...
Oh, yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
So it's not like, the irony is it saves the gallons and we're still paying for the capacity. Do we pay the same price for capacity as we pay for flow?
Yes.
We do.
Well, no, I'm sorry. I'll have to check into that.
There must be a little relief.
Well, I know that we just got two line items, what we're paying.
Okay.
And we pay for maintenance and flow. So we're probably paying, yep.
Do I recall that Millis does not have a vote on the Charles River Pollution Control District? And if that's true, how do we address that?
That's been, that's correct. And I brought that up at the last meeting. And it was stated that, and Franklin was there, Medway was there, and Bellingham was there. They were, we were all represented at the meeting. And it came from the Executive Director. It's just that's the way the bylaws are written. And, you know, two things that I took away from that meeting that I was just going to report on, that they have no desire or they cannot even think of upgrading the station to accept any more sewerage from any of these surrounding towns. And on the, the Board, as I reported before, there was a previous Town Council and the previous Town Administrator. We went, and I think Mike, I don't know if Mike was there or not, but we went and met and they just, no. They just saw, no, there was no need of it. That's not the way the system was set up. And, you know, we had, that was a great discussion we had at our last, you know, Sewer Committee meeting with myself, the Town Administrator, Mr. Jermaine, and Town Council was there. And how do we want to move forward with that? I think that's part of a discussion that Mr. Jermaine maybe wants to close with or, you know, make comments of that last meeting that we had. If there's none of the questions, I'm sorry.
Well, I think what we want to do, and we do have developers in the audience, and I'm going to look right at Town Council to say, so now we know we're at capacity on the books, not necessarily actual consumption, but we can't fight the formula. We're a town that is really committed to economic development. We have developers who are looking at future land opportunities in the town beyond what's already on the books. So the question becomes, what do we do? And also, well, I'll ask that first question.
So it depends ultimately on your policy on, or do you want to chase the capacity by compelling more hookups and removing some of the permitted stuff from the books now to free it up for other projects? Then I think we've already talked about mandatory hookup bylaw. A five-year, a one-year, or two-year, well, whatever, there, you could design what you like. There's capacity buyback stuff for some people that have paid betterments, where you could pay, or a developer could pay to obtain some of that capacity. My guess is there won't be a tremendous amount of takers there. You'd be working in the margins unless there's some very big parcels. We did a capacity buyback program in Kingston where some big vacant parcels that had paid a lot of dough, they were not interested in development, so we got a little capacity back. That's a, that's a possibility too. Short of that, I think your strategies are going to be related maybe to doing sewerage outside of Charles River and doing something more, more local if that's what you wanted to do, assuming that there's land and money. And those are kind of the strategies. None of them are perfect. And that's, that's on the one side. So that's if you want, if you're chasing capacity. If, based upon your capacity, you want to know how you make smart decisions in land use permitting and how the limited capacity factors into that, that's a different discussion. But just chasing capacity, I think Mike has laid out how, how these formulas work and how real flow versus permitted flow works. And getting people on the books can be good from a capacity standpoint.
And the second question I have is, is the town at any risk? We have these promises on the books, permits and/or anticipated, which we just saw. So a developer comes through and they're 40B. Do they get to jump the line? And take capacity that's already been permitted even if shovel hasn't hit the ground yet?
This follows kind of an offline conversation, and this is going to sound lawyerly, but it really depends. So where this issue has come up in the past, the Housing Appeals Committee, which is the frontline hearing body under 40B, has decisions on both sides of this. But the decision that we focus on most is that where, if a town has no capacity, then I'm less troubled about someone trying to take it if it's actually been firmly committed. You can't get blood from a stone. If there's a little capacity left that is in limbo and they want to come in and get it, but we have, you have a well-conceived plan as to who gets it. A street that, where there's dying septic systems and your last 20,000 gallons are going to them and you reason why and there's an actual motion and a vote. There is a town that was successful in thwarting of 40B developers' efforts to gobble that up. And 40B is the outlier here because you can control development and other, and other schemes. But 40B developers absolutely have the right to try and jump the line. But where you have a good plan and/or physical limitations to that, there's only so much they can do. And that's been in both water and sewer.
Thank you.
I guess I'm a little concerned that everything I'm hearing says, number one, we're pretty close to capacity, at least as far as permitting goes. And number two, the alternatives, by and large, and II is outside that and so on, are all relatively long-term. And nothing's going to happen in terms of building a new sewer plant or getting construction or anything else. So I guess I come down to what I was asking earlier, which is the legal issue of, okay, we know permitting-wise, we're at capacity and we choose to go beyond that. How do you plan to defend us?
Well, the thing that would concern me there is the contract. A contract is a contract. So I'd have to go over the specific terms and see what the penalties, if it's fiscal penalties only and not injunctive penalties, then the, their remedy would be fiscal. I don't have a remedy to supersede a contract. It's a matter of how, how we would choose to deal with that particular issue on that.
Is Charles River going to care as long as we aren't dumping excess capacity?
I can't speak for Charles River, not either in terms of what their threshold tolerance for that would be or their resources as to how aggressive they would be if we over-permitted for it.
Because what I'm concerned with more than the permit is the actual. And that leads us to some of our alternatives that perhaps we've discussed in terms of things that we can do. But even those are long-term, even if we get help from our legislators or whatever. But that's not going to happen overnight. And in the meantime, we're putting a cap on ourselves, as I see it, to allow our developers or others to come into our community and help grow our community economically, which is what we're trying to do. And that is very distressing to me at this point.
Well, I would agree with my colleague. I mean, that's why we're having this long debate. Because the success of an effort to grow our tax base is now bumping into a sewer capacity issue. I know the numbers aren't quite, don't quite get there, but we're pretty darned close to being okay with the 40B and the Main Street that we've already got on the table. And, you know, by the time those permits get finalized and whatnot, there will be, I believe, some opportunity for some of these other things to come online. It'll be, so the actual flow will, will be okay. It's the next one. And we all know there's a next one out there somewhere. It's not really the 40B in my mind at this point.
There's, there is another one. There's definitely...
So that one's an issue. Now, if we tell them it's an issue, then it's up to the developer to say, "Is there a Plan B?" Clearly, Plan B is alternative sewer, on-site. Or, as Mr. Carter indicated, the likelihood of us finding a satellite plant for more than one development in Millis is pretty limited based upon what we've already looked at. That doesn't mean we can't go back to Charles River and try to get some leverage to get them to expand capacity. Believe me, I'm all in favor of asking for some real representation on their board. But you had seven or eight towns there. None of them have it either. How did we get into this wonderful arrangement? That's a different thing. There's, the leverage points there are different, whether it's legislative or regulatory or whatever. I mean, there's other towns that are going to be unhappy with this as well. But they won't do anything unless they fear they're going to lose us as a customer. And if we don't have options, then, you know, we're kind of stuck. But my last point is, and I think this is important for the next developer to know, we're going to be looking for financial contribution to help us get out of this situation. Whether it's more funding for II, whether it's helping those homeowners that are already along the line, giving them some support to hook up so that we get that going, which is not the same thing as having the other sewer users waive the fee, which I have a little trouble with frankly, but... So I don't want to, I want to share the opportunity with developers and not feel as though it's all on the sewer system to find the solutions.
So in the meantime, Counselor?
So let me just chime in on something, just, I'll give a real-life example, Jim, on something we did in Easton, in the center. They had a small center with a couple of stores and one or two restaurants, but no sewerage. It was old buildings. So they had the old shovel shops factory, which were falling apart, but historically significant for the town. We worked with a developer. They built their own treatment plant. We asked them to build it well over capacity to handle our downtown, what limits, so we could get a few restaurants in. They did it. Then we took it over as a town, so they built it all coming in. We helped subsidize that a little bit, but they also were, you know, we kind of met halfway. And now we have a downtown that has some sewer capacity, both for housing and some of the commercial elements. So these public-private partnerships work. It's a negotiation every single time. But that's an example. Easton has another project similar. We had them Big 40R project, so it was more cooperative than 40B. They wanted to design a 50,000-gallon-a-day plant. We asked them to do 100,000 gallons. We put in some of the money for it and we enjoy the benefit of that. So we kind of met them halfway. They got their permits, they got their increased density through the 40R process. We paid a little bit and we, but we get the benefit of sewer for users that really need it over there.
Well, I think that's part of our short-term strategy, as you point out. The next developer in the door, we have to work with that developer because assuming it's a project that we feel as though is beneficial to the town and we have this barrier from sewerage, we got to work together to create some capacity. Now, I have one, one other technical question and then I promise to not say anymore for at least three minutes. The sewer line that goes down Orchard Street from Glen Allen to the pump station adds about, I don't know, 30, 40 users? Is that potential users?
Yeah.
That capacity is being reserved. Do we have any sense right now of the hookups that are happening? Because those people have to pay for the hookup.
There's a lot of interest. We get phone calls on a daily basis. I got one, I received one this morning from one of your neighbors in that area. And they're waiting. Right now, the system, we put it on a freeze because it's leaking.
Well, okay.
And we're not ready for it. I think that if, we would have had several over the winter.
So not only do we see some momentum in the development itself, but there's some momentum along the extension?
Absolutely. At least four or five that are ready.
Ready to move. And they, they got a free sewer line.
That's right.
And a water main, but they're probably all water customers already, right?
They were. Yeah, you know, 99%.
Yeah, okay.
Are they part of the permitted process, if you don't mind me asking?
They're in the, they're in these numbers.
They're in the numbers for the permits.
So if we receive a letter from a developer on February 1st and we've had this conversation and this is public record. I have a development, 25 homes, 50 bedrooms. What, how do we handle it?
Can I just chime quickly on that? So I think that what would have to happen, that with myself and our engineer, we would have to break, make a recommendation to the Town Administrator on that process and the Board would have to look at it as our recommendation. I mean, if you're asking that question, I would, I'm ready to state right now, and I think Mike is with me, because we've had this discussion, that we're going to have to revert back to the days of, that there's a moratorium. You're going to have to place a moratorium on it. And what that's going to happen is you're going to have to have that, the developer, come in and have this discussion that we're having. What are they going to build? Because you just can't, you know... Because you just can't, you know, by then, we may be able to take off some of this gallonage from other homes being tied in. But you have numbers right in front of you right now that were already over our permitted capacity by, I think it's 8,000 gallons?
55.
Well, only if you put the two.
If you add the two.
If you add the two. But, I mean, correct. I mean, and, you know, we've had interest from the 40B. He has been here. I mean, he hasn't formally discussed it. He's in front of the ZBA. So, I mean, why they haven't come to you yet, I don't understand.
Well, they don't have to.
No, okay. All right.
So they, I mean, they've expressed an interest in coming to the selectmen for the purposes of the fee side of things. But the zoning board of appeals assumes the role of the sewer commissioners, so they're asking for the capacity there. If I was on the zoning board, and I'm going to be at that meeting, I would certainly say, geez, sewer commissioners, we're novices at this. Geez, Mr. McKay, Mr. Carter, we're novices at this. What do we do with this? We hear that there's no capacity. At the same time, I would expect that your department, the selectmen, maybe even Mike, working with your department, would alert the ZBA once you see the application. We have capacity, we don't have capacity. I'm not speaking about any specific project, but there's others out there in the ether that we've all talked about, and that is part of the process. It happens at multiple points through, from the eligibility application that developers do through the subsidizing agencies, through the permitting, and then beyond. So there's multiple points in there where we could advise the process. So 40B is tricky, obviously, but we've done this.
So, Madam Chair, if I could ask, to the council unit, is it, since the ZBA on this one application is going to operate in lieu of, is there any value in this board giving them, I'll say, some guidance?
So I think that was maybe three minutes and like 10 seconds, Jim, so I think you're okay. I cannot recommend enough that when it comes to 40B, especially to help the ZBA out, because they're not used to wearing all these shoes, advise them early and often with your recommendations. In my own opinion, having done as much 40B work as anyone, taking a passive approach to saying, hey, you know, we'll chime in when we have to, is not effective. Getting ahead of the curve is the most effective.
That's why you're here.
So I think it's really important that if this board has a strong feeling, and not just in 40B, but any other development too.
Well, but I, we can, as zoning, I'm sorry, as sewer commissioners, we can take a position.
You, and I would recommend strongly, especially if we're getting into some close calls out there, that you take a strong position. Now, there may be a project that is so awesome that that strong position may be, we're going to find a way to see if we can work this permit out, and we'll work with you, will you work with us? There may be other projects where we say, we don't have the capacity.
Well, that's the point, I guess, that what I'm looking for is what Mr. McKay suggested, whatever we call it, which is notice to the next developer. Okay? We're not in a position, based upon our capacity projections, to grant sewer permits without working with you carefully to understand how the developer and the town can come up with a plan that keeps us within our sewer capacity limits.
So whether it's, and I think Jim raised a good point, whether it's a formal moratorium or an official policy decision that you make based upon projections going forward, what you've promised, and a high development, an economic development area perhaps, that you make a policy on where our remaining gallons are going, if you have them. And if you don't have them, then that policy may be, we're not going to say yes to anything because we can't. But I do think having formal votes by the people that are in charge of allocating capacity are important. There's one very important case to me out of the town of Grafton that says those kinds of votes act as the evidence that informs the permitting boards, especially in the 40B context.
Do you know what timing there is for the next ZBA meeting?
I know that the 40B on Main Street is February 18th.
February 18th is a public hearing.
Yep.
I would appreciate it if you could get back to us with, from a legal interpretation, if we consciously go over our permitted level, what if any penalties are we likely to incur?
Well, I'm going to have to look at that contract then.
That's what I said.
So my guess is it's going to be pretty cut and dry.
Well, I, yeah, I'd like to know what it is.
Sure.
I mean, that's certainly, because there's a legal risk here we're trying to assess. In addition to that, I don't know if my colleagues would agree, but I don't, I would like counsel to draft a policy for us to act upon.
I was going to ask that.
I don't want to make it up.
I agree.
Sitting here. We meet again on the 10th, which is in advance of when this develop, and I'm not trying to single out this developer.
No.
Just that the sequence of things would be such that it's still timely, it's a little bit perhaps more airtight than us, you know, going by the seat of our pants, while at the same time, maybe tonight, we could vote to say the town council has been charged with developing a policy for going forward and that the board will not entertain any further permitting until we've had a chance to review and adopt the policy produced by council. That's a two-week moratorium.
I'm also concerned on one issue, and that would be if a 40B comes in and basically says, okay, we're planning to build, and they basically jump the line, what are the implications to us?
Well, again, you can't get capacity where none exists.
Right.
So even in the 40B world, but in terms of the policies in general, I want to have a numbers discussion with Jim and Mike, and Mike, and just so I have a good, I mean, I have a good feel for some policy bullet points, and I'll kind of add more than I have to, but it's going to be based partly on the numbers. So Jim and I will have to crunch the numbers and develop some policies with respect to the lists that are in Mike's PowerPoint and how we approach that from a policy perspective, if it's fearing more towards, we got nothing for you, or we're doing something temporary until we can catch up, or something else like that. But it's going to take a conversation between myself and Jim. We'll find a way over the next few days. I'll come down to Town Hall and sit with Mike and Jim and work something out.
Just quickly, in closing, the Charles River, I asked that exact question, Pete, to them, what if a 40B comes? And they said, if your permitted numbers are to the maximum, they will write the letter and their legal staff will say, you can't do it. You can't, you know, the 40B, there's nothing there. The numbers are at the max. And lastly, they're willing to come to the board. I was waiting to talk to the chair, you know, whenever you'd like them to come, meaning the executive director and her engineer, and maybe one of the members. So maybe I can set that up with Mike and Loring.
They're bringing us a board seat? Is that what they're doing?
No, they're not going to allow that. Maybe you can ask that. I think Mr. Jermaine will ask them that question, and I think rightfully so.
Yeah. We pay in.
I'd be more than happy to.
Well, my preference would be to invite the executive director and the board chair.
They will. No, that's what, I'm sorry. If you remember, years ago, they did come out and I said, you haven't been here. We have, you know.
We're welcome.
February 10th.
I'm sure the chair can provide coffee.
Sure.
She'll bring muffins and hotel.
Much more gracious than at least I am.
I would like to propose two things since it's 9:15. One is to entertain a motion, much like you said, so that we are providing some guidance to council and indicate externally that in the meantime, until we adopt a policy, we need to, we need to put a pause, I think, a moratorium.
A policy in advance of a policy. Yeah, I don't want to use the word moratorium, but I would like, I would make a motion, if I can make it up as I go along here, that, you know, the board directs town council to prepare a policy for consideration at our next meeting to deal with the, I'll call it, the shortage of additional capacity. And in the interim, this board will not be entertaining any applications for sewer permits until we've concluded this policy discussion with town council.
I'd also like to add, if I may, the understanding, the legal ramifications of what if.
I think the policy is about the moratorium.
Yeah, I already have the direction. I'm going to get that. That's just Mike directing me to give a legal opinion. Right, I'm already going to look at that.
Moved and seconded all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. Motion carries unanimously. I also want to acknowledge that in the audience are two experts. We have our economic development director on one side. It's like the brides and the grooms. And then we have a developer, an engineer who represents many developers in town, very familiar with Milis, very familiar to most of the boards, I think. And over the course of the night, I've been watching his body language, and there's been a lot of shaking of, kind of admonishment, shaking of head. So I just wanted to, before we wrap this up, invite you to have input into this, to come forward, because I don't want you to feel like you weren't heard, and we also want to know, you know, where you think our thinking is flawed, if you do.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jan Marican, Legacy Engineering. I guess I shake my head because, you know, every time someone says we're at capacity, I know we're not. And you all know we're not. And there's mountains of evidence that says we're not. You could study any neighborhood in the town, and you'll realize that 110 gallons per day is an illusion. It's not a real number. It's DEP's max day number, and Charles River uses it because they're permitted by DEP. But when it comes to issuing sewer connections in the town of Milis, you are the permitting authority, not DEP. So I guess I just hope that before you take any action, that will have a lot of ramifications, that you understand, to your point, what are your real constraints? 110 gallons per day per bedroom really means, it means nothing. You know, what's your real constraint? Are you allowed under your contract with Charles River to permit over your average daily flow? That's a yes or no question. I know that Medway, I've been told that they're actually over their average daily flow.
Exhibit that we were.
And I just got a project approved with more, with a new connection.
They're over.
Yeah, they're over, and they just gave me a permit for a new project. So I don't think.
You have a lot of money for.
I don't think you're really constrained. I think you probably have a lot of room to create a policy decision amongst yourselves. Okay, we're not married to 110. You know, maybe 50 is a real number, maybe 60 is a real number, maybe as a policy, we want to say we want to be married to 70, just to be safe or something, and that you adopt, you know, some kind of policy going forward as to how you're going to issue sewer extension permits that's more based in reality than 110. 110 is not a real number, in nowhere, in no neighborhood in town or in any town, to generate 110 gallons per day per bedroom.
But don't I understand that our access to the Charles River is, requires that we follow the 110 rule, no matter what we all agree about it?
Well, I heard discussion tonight, though, that said that all they really care about is that you don't actually exceed the average daily flow. Okay, and I'm sure if you ask them, they're going to say, yeah, we use 110, because DEP uses 110, because they're DEP permitted, they're going to think 110.
There's got to be legislation in that contract for them to say, wait a minute. Everybody around us is at 140. This can't work.
So I think the important question is, council's view of the contract is, you know, is the real constraint, are you really legally prohibited from permitting above that based on the 110? Or is really your only threshold that you can't exceed your actual average daily flow of 628,000? Is that really the only legal issue that you have to worry about? Because, you know, hanging on to all this capacity for years and years and years, that's never going to be used, as to your point.
We don't want to do that.
We're not happy about it either.
It's unproductive. So that's why I'm shaking my head back there.
Well, I just wanted you to know you were being observed, but also that your point is important because you represent, like it or not, a big contingent of the conversation. So your, what you pointed out is instructive, I think, for council's policy recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weiss, is there anything you would like to add to this from an economic development standpoint? And then I'm going to wrap up and thank everybody for addressing this topic.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bob Weiss, the planning director and economic development director, so I want to make sure planning is in there as well. I think what we just heard, Mr. Marican, is pretty representative of what developers, their image of what Milis represents in terms of development. I was hired because we want to talk about development in Milis. We want to talk about commercial development, economic development, as well as, you know, residential development. So, but we, it's apparent tonight that town is kind of confused as to what is really going on. I mean, we have much more clarity right now in terms of our sewer capacity. And I think the decision to, you know, to have town council come up with a policy and then perhaps to delay our decision-making gives us enough time to study this more. I think that's more important, that if we delay things for a few weeks, for a few months, it's more important that we understand our development capacity going forward, not just for, in terms of water and sewer, but this also goes to things like transportation as well. There's a lot of things that are going to affect economic development. So this is, I think, going, in a few weeks, I'm going to come to this board and mention that we're going to be doing a master plan study, because we don't have that, and this would be part of this, this plan. So, yet we do have to take a step back sometimes to do planning. And so I think this, the decision that the board has come to tonight is a good decision. I know, and it will help to fully round out what Milis is all about to developers who are looking to come in, whether it's for residential development or for commercial development. So that's really all I have to say.
Well, I want to thank everybody for weighing in. This is a really important issue, and we've been working on this for several weeks. I want to thank, in particular.
Just, Madam Chair, I want to say two things. First of all, I'm not confused.
Yeah, I'm not.
I think I know what we're doing here. Second of all, I consciously did not use the word moratorium, because moratorium says something to the marketplace that I don't think this board is prepared to say.
Right.
And I definitely appreciate that. I used the word moratorium because that was what was used in the past, and that's what was the past procedure. I remember sitting in this room when a gentleman came in and wanted to hook up two, you know, two homes, because, and he was, he pretty much fronted the sewer, and the pass board voted him down that he couldn't do it. I think that the confusion with the 110, the 110 is it. I mean, the 110, that's the permit, they're not, the Charles River Pollution District is not going to change that 110. They're not going to do it. That's what's in our contract. It's definitely, I know, I've seen it.
I do need the contract documents and any advisories or guidance.
So what we sign, we sign a contract, for every single house that's being, you know, being built, we sign it at 110. I sign it, and the executive director signs it at 110, and they're not going to change it. And when she comes, that's a good question, I think this board needs to ask her, why? What's the? Thank you.
I think that's a wrap. Does everybody agree? All right. The next item should not take as long, but there, this was a complicated and technical one. So thank you, Mr. Carter, for coming and sharing your evening with us. Agenda item 2020, before we get to scheduled business, and are you leaving? Yes, you are. So happy. Thank you very much for joining us, town council. We greatly appreciate it. And also, the work of Attorney Fedorov, we want to note on public record, has been excellent. We enjoy working with her, and she's very effective.
Great, thank you.
An appointment to the Website and Communications Committee. I will tackle this one as a liaison. We, by enthusiastic endorsement, would like to recommend that this board appoint Matt Irolano to our committee as soon as possible. He brings highly relevant experience from more than 20 years of doing web and digital communications. He's presently with a firm that, called Brightcove, that specializes in web video. And prior to that, he handled a lion's share of digital communications for Berklee College of Music. He's lived in the town, I forgot how many years, so I'm going to say over 10, has a young daughter, and represents, I think, for us, a new voice, and he has a lot of great ideas, so. I'm putting that forward.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that the board approve the appointment of Mike Irolano to serve as a member of the Website and Communications Committee.
Moved and seconded all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. We had two carryover items, because one of us was in the tropics. So the first one is adopting, is considering. So the first one is adopting, is considering the adoption of a description for our town clerk. That is not to say job description for hiring, because we want to recognize that this is an elected position. However, in our town, the position has a paid stipend and is benefits eligible. And so people ask us, what is it that happens with our money? They want to know how it's being spent. And so we had a consultant report in which the absence of any sort of tangible description was noted by the consultant. And so what is in your packets is that exact job description with some minor annotations made to it that reflected a little bit more customization for Milis, and that were recommended. And again, it would just be a framework for people to say, yes, this is a real position in our town, even though it's very part-time. And yes, we do spend taxpayer money on it. So my, I'm putting out there for this board that we adopt, we provide some available guidelines, so that we have a sense of kind of the target, and maybe even the bullseye of what the job, what the commitment to the town entails. Again, it is an elected position, so the alternative is we do nothing. And I don't think that was really the recommendation coming out of the consultant report. So I just wanted to put that out. And you weren't here last week, last meeting, Pete. And so we agreed that we would want you to weigh in on that discussion.
Before I make any comments, what kinds of comments were made last week? Would you mind sharing?
Just the discussion that it was an elected position. So therefore, we can't really institute this more than just saying guidelines, but at least it provides guidelines. So we're trying to recruit people to run for office, for example. We're also trying to go into our budget hearings with total transparency. And so the combination of the two, it seems that we paid for a consultant report. The consultant report pointed to areas of responsibility. But right now, there was nothing anywhere organized that said, and this is what that list is. So the consultant felt that we needed that and provided that to us.
Have we talked about any of this with the existing town clerk?
Yeah, she was here for the meeting last week. But we kind of tabled the discussion.
I was just asking.
She's here now, so I mean, I'm assuming she's here for this.
Discuss, and what her take on any of this was.
We could just.
I didn't.
Oh.
I, sorry. You tabled it, so I didn't speak last time.
Okay. Well, that can happen.
Madam Chair, I would like to just state my position. My position is that the town clerk's office is an elected position. Town charter defines the position as town clerk that is responsible for carrying out the duties and responsibilities in the bylaws and in the mass general laws. That the Board of Selectment has no authority to adopt any kind of position description. It's up to the voters who they would like to vote and put in that office. So I think it's inappropriate for this board to take any action with respect to this statement. The guidelines are up to the voters. The voters will decide who they want to put in that position. And there's nothing that we could say that would indicate that if the voters wanted to put somebody who demonstrated none of those capabilities, that we would have any right to tell them who to vote for as the town clerk. So my position is that since we are not moving forward with the appointed position, that we do not take any action on this particular item. On the other hand, I think there's value, tremendous value, in the report from the consultant. Because from my perspective, one of the findings was that the current staffing level in the town clerk's office is appropriate. Adding additional staffing would not be appropriate, because it would be overstaffed. So I think there's a lot of value in that report. Also, the report assumed that if we went forward with a recommendation to make the position appointed, that if we were going to have an appointed position, then we would be duty-bound to create a job description. So I think the board's decision not to go with an appointed position recommendation indicates that we would not be adopting, in my view, we should not adopt a job description or job guidelines, because that's up to the voters to decide.
I have mixed views on this at this stage, only because.
Why we needed the third.
That's right. Third wheel of the trike is here.
We had a consultant come in. He, interestingly enough, did discuss having a job description, although he didn't phrase it, I don't think, that way. It was a position, what the office is supposed to be performing as a job. I think it's.
Pretty sure that was a job description.
Well, however, we want to phrase.
That's what he called it.
Yes. Which I found interesting, because he's an individual who has served in government most of his life. And he understood this was an elected position. Which is of interest to me, that he would have proposed the need for a job description, recognizing that this is an elective position. I think it's useful for voters to have some idea of what the clerk is supposed, we think the clerk is supposed to be doing. But I also happen to agree with you, my colleague, in terms of, we have no right, I don't believe, as a board, to be introducing a job description for another elected position, which is defined by charter, bylaws, and whatever. So I'm torn, and I don't quite understand why the recommendation was there for a job description. I would particularly be interested in whether our town administrator would find a guideline or anything like this description useful in some manner. But I'm not sure, even if we did that, that it's the prerogative of this board, to be very fair, to vote on something like this as a job description. It's useful, but I don't believe, as an elected official, we should be making any such decision. And that's.
If I may, Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
Just to the defense of the consultant, I do believe that the consultant, in this case, put the job description in there in the event that the town considered going to an appointed position, that we'd have that template to work with. So I don't think it was the intention or the formal recommendation of the consultant that this, a job description be accepted for an elected position. I know in the job description, it does mention, you know, town clerk is appointed by the town administrator and approval, with the approval of the board. So I think, from his perspective, that was sort of the template. From the, a policy position of the board, I think I did make it clear at the last meeting that this would have no legal force in effect.
Right.
This would simply be, if the board decided to move forward with a guideline, that would simply be a decision of the board to put that out there, that that is the board's opinion, sort of like a resolution, of what the town clerk position should be. But it doesn't have any force in effect in law. As an independent elected position, would not answer to the board in any capacity.
I guess my answer is, I'm uncomfortable with our board making any such decision. We have information provided in the analysis that Bernie, I think was his name, put together. That's useful. Anyone in town who wants to see that can read it. We can probably post it on that information on the website. But aside from that, I guess I'm not comfortable with our board introducing something like that as the, which could be interpreted that we are enforcing something that we really have no right to enforce.
Does anybody else have any, anybody else have any comments on this?
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Lisa Harden, Milis Town Clerk. I don't have any problem with this, with the description that was in the report being available to the public. As far as I know, it is available to the public as part of that report. So if anybody's asking, what does a town clerk do in terms of, well, this is what an appointed full-time town clerk would do, it's a reasonable description. The particular one that is in the, is with your material tonight, has some additional things in it.
Right.
That I wouldn't necessarily be in favor, but the, since this one does, as the town administrator stated, say it's appointed by the town administrator, it doesn't really apply unless some of the wording is taken out.
Okay, well, it doesn't.
I'm fine with if people are asking questions about what a town clerk does. It gives a reasonable description.
Okay. All right. Well, I guess there's not any support to take any further action on that. So I will move on to agenda item 2022. If we get the technology up, which actually, there's been a lot.
Can we plug this one?
Yeah, if you have to.
Yeah.
Then I won't, then I'll have to, you'll have to advance the slides then.
Thank you, Lisa. Sorry, Bubba. Yeah. Somebody put it over there, you want to?
Yeah, you can.
Yeah. I think you can reach carefully, not moving things over here. There you are.
All right, cool. We're almost done, folks. Can I use present or viewer, no? No signal, no, not working. Yes, maybe. No, yes, no.
Want to send it to Mike again?
No, I won't bother. I'll just talk it. That's too bad. I have a good presentation. We have to get the technology thing. Can we, can we get the technology thing, though, fixed? It's 2020. Can we get the technology thing?
See, for some reason, the Apple is not working.
It's a mainstream computer. We should be able to make this work. This is a discussion about having a town social media policy. Kind of a little bit of a pickup from our last meeting. There are no, presently no town-owned outbound centers of communication that would fall in the realm of what we all know to be conventional and widely-used social media. And they are viewed as very effective ways of reaching the town. And we kind of knew we were going to get down to this place, having put the website into place, and we're still doing a lot of tweaking with that. But we've had several situations recently, and we have several to come, where the situation shouldn't be that I receive a phone call from the DPW director in the middle of something on a weekend, asking me if I can post to Milis Public Forum to announce that the transfer station is closed under emergency circumstances because a tree has fallen. Or we have a, I guess it's not working, I don't know. We have a public meeting, a public hearing coming up. And unless people are going to the website and are trained to go to the website, they're not going to see it. And we certainly have people across Town Hall as department directors or managers who could, in fact, receive and be oriented to the next generation of a new social media policy that acknowledges that social media is, in fact, a mainstream method of communication by organizations of every type, to include municipalities. For emergencies, cancellations, to foster community, to announce elections, to announce public hearings, to profile various businesses or people within the town, to announce town events, to do targeted work for economic development, to post job postings, to announce community news, to promote the town, various aspects of the town through scenic pictures, senior projects, ceremonies, beautification day, sports, legislator visits, new policies and events. And so my proposal was to invite our town council, which he, they did, to propose to our town the framework of a social media policy so that our town could communicate in the way which many residents expect us to be able to do. And absent doing that, what ends up happening is we have pile-on chains of information, such as what's going on with the gas station. I've heard, you know, every number of coffee shop is associated with it. Every type of gas station is associated. And we can all sit in this room and say, well, all this information is already available on the town website. But it would be really easy for somebody within Town Hall to put a comment in the right place that says, here's an update about the gas station. And then it would be fact. And then we wouldn't be dealing with a lot of innuendo. We probably would have had better communication with respect to the recent property tax bills. And last week, it was last week, might have been the week before, we had a really important visitor from the Massachusetts Office of Business Development, Peter Milano. He's a senior director of business development. He came to Milis and pronounced Milis is now on his radar, and sent us off with a lot of follow-up and new introductions that will be supportive of economic development. And this is a quote that would have shown up in my very cheerful slides that I will now read, which is, "Smart governments know the power of social media and use it effectively to compete for and retain business." So I am here indicating that we do have a Website and Communication Committee that among our goals as a select board were to better inform, engage, and empower residents. And so I am hoping with that in mind, that we are at the point now in 2020 where we can agree that there are a lot of upsides to having our own voice to inform, engage, empower residents, and to use it from an economic development standpoint to showcase various facets of the town. And we have recommendations from Town Council that were sent to us in terms of what that policy would look like. So that is my pitch to my colleagues and to the town, because then that way, I won't have to read about some of the unsavory things that were unsettling and frankly unfair, and don't have anything to do with somebody who doesn't have thin skin, but has frankly, I think, a lot to do with the fact that we weren't putting out information proactively ourselves. And if we put out information succinctly, proactively, professionally ourselves, then I think it would really neutralize a lot of vitriol and a lot of confusion, and be extremely important for the town, and really bring more people together, and hopefully engage more people. So that is on the table for discussion and deliberation by the board. No one?
My colleague, enter first. I have some thoughts, but I think, you're the more senior member.
More senior.
I'll defer to you first.
Older.
No, senior.
But certainly not wiser. A couple of comments. I believe that we would have some benefit to trying a little bit more aggressively to publish information on social media. Which, from the chair's point of view, is a startling statement for me.
My teeth are all in my mouth and have not fallen out into the ground.
But.
But I knew it was coming.
I think the most important thing to do is to develop a process where we have authoritative and important information that is disseminated by not only means of social media, but on the website as well, as well as on cable, as well as, I wish we had a newspaper. So I think it's common upon us to develop a, I will call it, a plan for implementing this kind of social media application. It's easy to open a Facebook page. I understand. Not having done it myself, nor do I plan on doing it. But that's not the part that I'm interested in. I want to understand how this, how governance is going to work. Who can get on it? Is it outbound only, or is it receive comment? Who's responsible in the town administration to make sure that the information is timely and accurate? I want to understand what the time commitment would be. And I think that the ideal situation, of course, would be having a communications director, who might be double-hatting with somebody else, who would be responsible for this. And I did spend a fair amount of time at the MMA meeting this weekend, listening, learning, hearing from what others are doing. And so I, not that that convinced me, but I think the most important thing here is understanding and implementing. understanding an implementation process and how it works so that it'll benefit everybody. I did a little, dare I say, Google today. And Google tells me that the school department, the elementary school building committee, the police department, the fire department, the rec department, and the library all have a Facebook page.
That is accurate.
So I guess what I would like to hear is a couple of hints from them as to how they make it effective and what they're doing, including who's doing what. Because I don't even have to go to the next town over, I think, to figure out how they're doing it, because they're going to tell me, well, we have a communications director, and it's really great, and off we go, and that's fine, and that may work, but I'm not sure that's a position I want to add. So I want to make sure that we learn from these folks. I had a thought that perhaps we would ask each department that comes to the budget meeting to answer a couple of simple questions for us. Do they have a Facebook page? And of course, we'll know the answer, so that's what every good lawyer does, they know the answer before they get it. Is it outbound only, or does it receive comment? And if it's receiving comment, how are the comments dealt with? And how is the content provided? Who provides it? Who curates it? Who peer reviews it? And who sends it out? And all that's got to be done, as I understand it, not in 24 weeks, and not in 24 hours. Maybe it's in 24 minutes, I don't know. But that, to me, is the crucial component here. The policies that we received from council, to me, address more of another issue that was addressed at the conference, which is our responsibility as a government to monitor the fact that employees of the town should not expect that we won't stand up for them if they're somehow mistreated or called out for some unfair way for, on non-town-sponsored social media. We have a responsibility there as well, which is even harder to do. And of course, in the conference you go to, the horrible things that were going on are not happening here. But that, to me, is also a concern that perhaps I wasn't paying enough attention to. So I think there's two issues here. One issue is, how do we effectively move forward with a social media account that's going to achieve the goals that the chair indicated we should achieve? And how do we do it in a way that we know it'll work effectively in this town based upon what we think we got to do and the experience that our other folks have already had in utilizing a social media site to help them? Notice I did not name any, because I don't want to name anyone particular, but I think there's an usual suspect here. In any event, that's, that would be my view. I really think it's important to do that. And also, if we're going to do it, we got to do it in such a way that we don't violate the open meeting law, we don't violate the, the records retention law, there's a whole list of horribles in there, which are all manageable, because people are doing it. And anyway, that's my two cents worth.
Well, I've got to say, for two cents worth from someone who's never opened Facebook.
That's not true. That's not true. I have opened it and decided.
I was just saying what you just told us.
I love seeing what my grandchildren are up to.
Actually, Jim has very cogently described many of the issues that confront opening a media site. And I happen to concur in terms of, we need to establish the process, the single policy, a, a single person contact or whatever we do. When he mentions the library, the police, the fire, schools, whatever, they have a single person who is responsible. That person manages the site. And so there's, it's an established, even when the ESBC was doing it, they designated one person, whom I happen to be familiar with, who managed that site, who was the source of all information. It didn't mean that others couldn't have information published, but it had to go through that person. And that's, I think, what you're getting at. And then it had to deal with, how to deal with comments that came into the site, and again, how are you going to deal with that? So it's the process that I'm concerned with, as you've noted. The administration of the site and the process are of concern to me. And the concept of, is it one-way or two-way, in all honesty, even if you put it on a website, you're going to get feedback in other social media sites. So I don't think there's any way we limit it to say it's not a two-way process. We have to be prepared for how we deal with two-way communications. And this is not something at the town level that we're dealing with, rather than in the departments, that's going to be an easy thing. I mean, I've thought about people I know here in town who might do it, and I know Karen has lots of free time on her hand, and, but the point is, it's going to take someone who's knowledgeable of the town, who understands the town's policies, or at least can check on what they are before any response goes out, and that we can trust that the responses are going to be appropriate for the town. But I absolutely concur with the fact that we have got to do something in terms of putting together a social media process. And we're way behind the gun on having done this for much too long.
Well, I would rather say we've been prudent, and prudence would now say, the time has come.
So I'd like to address just a couple of things, and then I would like to maybe make an assignment to the gentleman to my right, who ultimately owns the operations of the town day-to-day. First of all, I probably would recommend, based on everything that I've known and studied, and I have a professional area of, of interest and capability in this, is I would turn comments off. But you just set up the, you know, if you're talking about a Facebook page in particular, you just simply indicate that this is basically, you treat it like a bulletin board. The second thing, in terms of, I don't want to overthink it, right now, we, we have to become more trained reflexively in putting dates on the website calendar. If you go to the website calendar, not enough departments, we go to the town clerk's office, and you have a public meeting or, you know, something that requires a public posting, it goes on a wall. And we don't have it ingrained in our operational DNA that if it goes on the wall, it could go probably on the website at a minimum, right? And then if you post something like, we have a public hearing on February 18th that might be of interest to people, because it's going to be a very visible construction site in town, right on 109. To be able to, maybe through the website, have an opt-in listserv, so people can get, you know, the bulletins like the schools are doing. What's interesting to me is that these other school depart, these other town departments are, in fact, they decided their, their policy was better to beg forgiveness than to ask permission. They just said, you know what? We need this, we'll handle it, and we're doing it. There are definitely public records laws and things like that, which is why, in the case of Facebook, I would, I think people are perfectly fine with that. At least they know where to go for facts. You know, they see the town, the transfer station is closed, here is the phone number to call. So instead of people wondering about why is the transfer station called and all this, you know, closed, they go to the de facto repository of fact, where there's a piece of information, and the description of the town indicates that this is what this is. These are outbound announcements, you are always encouraged to contact the department at issue. So I guess I don't, there's a part of me that really doesn't want to overthink it, and we certainly have people in this town, maybe with the exception of the gentleman to my left, but, you know, most, most people have at least two different social media accounts that they regularly, during business hours, probably, you know, attend to.
I wouldn't agree with that.
You would not?
Nope.
Okay.
Because that doesn't mean there aren't a lot of them.
Right.
But there are folks, who may be my contemporary, who just don't. So I guess that we're, we need to parcel this out in a way that says, okay, how does the person who doesn't have, well, what I've been leery of is the person who does have social media. How do I responsibly reach out? I mean, it does appeal to me that an outbound communication will communicate with a bunch of people that will not look at anything else. But I'd like to think, and you certainly have shown us, that we will get people who will look at the website. As it improves, it'll be better. They won't use Facebook, they may use the website.
Right.
There are, there is an audience that watches cable.
Right.
The notion that cable can be improved to have more outbound information from the town, I think, is also part of the strategy. And I, I, I really feel as though getting it right, not perfect, but right, is important. I also think that, and this example of the tree down, to me, is clearly a problem we've had, we are having with reverse 911. We don't have accessibility to reverse 911 to enough people. The DPW director should have had access to reverse 911 and a Facebook page at that time, so he could have told the maximum number of people that there's a problem.
On a timely basis.
Yeah. Today, here I am calling you at 10:15, the tree went down at 10:10.
That's exactly what happened.
And that's, that's kind of.
But I got the call.
Plus, plus he had, well.
And I put it on a non-town social media page.
Well, I'm not, I'm not commenting about that.
Because that was the only way to do it.
I'm not commenting about that. I'm commenting about our lack, which is, I think, your point.
Right.
Right.
So, but there's got to be a protocol, because it's an official statement by the government as to what is happening. And I don't think it's impossible, I think it just has to be defined, and there's got to be a person to do it.
I'd just like to add my, oh, sorry. It's an absolute necessity. In this day and age, I don't know of any of the local areas that don't have some similar setup. How we choose to do it is a different issue, and whether it's one-way or two-way, the bottom line is, our primary intent is what you're both saying, which is, get the message out there and have a mechanism.
Right.
That gets that message out there from an appropriate approved authority or group of authorities.
Well, can I just ask a question, which is going to sound silly, but I don't, because I don't know? I mean, I would assume that with the website as well, we would build links in the website. If you wanted to click on Facebook for police.
Yep.
You could do it.
Yep.
Or school, or whatever.
Yep.
Okay, so I mean, now it's an integrated communication strategy.
Right, exactly.
And dare I say, another form of communication is going to be an LED sign.
That's correct.
In front of Town Hall.
Yep.
So, good.
And you know what? Then we're going to have a podcast, and I'm going to interview you, and people will be subscribing to it.
I've been interviewed on cable.
There you go.
Somebody watched it sometime, I don't know.
Yeah, but we're listening to podcasts now. When I commute, I.
We are not necessarily listening to podcasts.
So I would like to ask.
I'd just like to add a couple of comments, if you don't mind, since I'm sitting in the trenches and probably going to be very involved in this. I absolutely agree with the board that we need to get more communication out there to the public. I think it should come from the town and not from a, a non-town affiliated.
Right.
Website.
Well, the other, the other will exist. I mean, it does exist.
Correct. But the point, but the point being, I agree that we can get more information out there, and I was going to say, the LED sign is a great way to start.
Right.
And there are many methods, and we certainly can connect things to the website. My only comment is, I vehemently would argue against having the comments turned on. I think having the comments off makes sense.
Yep.
The reason being, not that I don't want to hear what the public says, and we don't want to respond, because we're always willing to respond if you call or email us. I would worry that it would start to get into something which could be gray area, or it could be a back-and-forth. We don't have a communications director.
Right.
And I'm, you know, we are all willing to jump in as we can, and we all wear a lot of hats, but that is a full-time job. If you're starting to respond to comments, you can look at legal issues and all kinds of things.
My concern is.
I would want to make sure that we were, it's accurate and remains positive.
If individuals are, if individuals are commenting on other sites that aren't under the umbrella of the town.
That's not our, that's not our fault. That's not our problem. That's outside of us, yes.
But if you have a lot of comments, you're going to need someone to be monitoring that 24/7.
That's fine.
So that's my only, that's my two cents.
But I would like to ask just one concession. I really think it'd be a good idea, if we could develop some, we need you posters, that we would put in Town Hall on, in March, in May, in September, and in November, because thousands of people who don't participate every day will be coming into this building to vote.
Correct. Oh, absolutely.
Good idea.
So even I can figure out, that it, it doesn't have to be, I need you, but you understand, I mean, this, it can, it could even be screenshots of the Facebook page, I don't know. But this is an opportunity that we've been talking about, to try and engage some folks who are enough interest in their government to vote, and maybe we can encourage them to join one of the committees or to join the effort. I, I would like us to try to do that.
Maybe we could put up a couple of the TV monitors that we've got, had scattered around the building, that we could just have out in the hall, that as they walk in, they're going to see on there, just that type of.
That was a, that was a sidebar, but.
No, we can, I can actually bring that to the.
We should start smoke signals, Jim.
Smoke signals. I could, I could bring that before the website committee, but what I would like to do, because operationally, ultimately, I'm looking at the team, and in particular, the town administrators, so I think that the, the person deputized with, you know, sending, coming back to us with mechanics is named Michael Gazinski.
Can we ask, when the budget folks come in, that they address, those who have one, tell us what they're doing?
Sure.
It can be five minutes.
Can you do that, sir?
Those, I'm sorry, I didn't catch.
I'm going to have the department heads, some of whom are sponsoring these things. I'd like them to talk a little bit about it. I have the questions.
Sure.
Oh, do you want to give him, do you want to give him the questions? Here's a question. He has excellent, excellent handwriting.
A little legal listener.
All right. We're near the end here. I think we're down to consent items, the minutes from December 13th.
That would actually be January 13.
January 13, that's what I thought. I looked at that and said, no, yes, sir.
I hit a two instead of.
We're the only ones here.
Friends, I make a motion that the board of, the draft, the committee, the meeting minutes for January 13th, 2020.
Second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all abstaining.
Abstain.
Motion carries unanimously. Before I entertain a motion to adjourn, there's a couple of quick things I wanted to tackle. First is, the date to register to vote in the presidential primary is 15 days from now, it is February 12th. The presidential primary being March 3rd. And early voting starts on February 24th. I want to just circle back, and I appreciate the indulgence, to our opening announcements, which was, in fact, the reminder of running for election, and my pitch to everybody that I will sign anybody's papers who's going to step forward and offer their time and talent and ideas, and I want to emphasize that these 11 positions, the moderator, town clerk, select board, school committee, there are two positions there, board of health, library trustee, planning board, two positions for constable and the housing authority, are places where you absolutely make a difference in the lives of your neighbors and in the future of the town. But we're a really small town, we absolutely need to collaborate, we need to look at restructuring aspects of our government, that's part of what the Mass Municipal Association Conference just covered, and we should probably put some summary report from your attendance there at a, on a future agenda. We're always looking to, as, you know, if there's something that grabs you from home, we're, we're really looking as a commitment to looking at how to improve the needs and the living experiences for our seniors, and I occupy that block as well. We have a feasibility study going on right now to look at what some options are from a facility standpoint, so the board has taken steps forward on that. We are certainly aware that we will not be immune from repairs to the high school. That's going to be a really important thing for people to look at, and these elected positions are going to do that. We have on Saturday, February 8th, an open invitation to anybody who wants to know where their money goes in town, it's Budget Hearing Day. And every department chair, I think, except for the school, right, is going to come forward and give their best pitch to you, the taxpayer, as to what they think represents a priority for them for the next fiscal year. And I'm hoping that you are thinking of running. I know that when I looked at this now, almost three years ago, I didn't have experience in elected office, I had what I felt were relevant skill sets and, and transferable skills, and convictions about expanding areas of government performance, engaging new residents, and improving communication and invigorating economic development. And those agendas are now being, are pathways that are now being. And those agendas are now being, are pathways that are now being traveled. There's a lot more ideas. I hope to continue to see them to future development. But last week, I read a quote by Representative Ayanna Pressley. She doesn't represent this district, but I thought it was a really powerful quote. And this is what she said. "I am not just here, I'm not here to just occupy space, I am here to create it. And I hope that everybody understands that when they see me in Roach Brothers, or they see me in a coffee shop, or they see me somewhere, and I immediately pounce on them to recruit them. That's very much in my DNA. And I really am excited, because we do have new people who are involved. And I think it's really important to encourage new and more voices from our community to step forward. And so with grateful heart, I have decided to step aside in the next election cycle, and I will not be seeking reelection for this Board. It's been a magnificent and life-changing experience for me. I've learned so much about myself, I've learned so much about our town, I've made so many new friends and connections along the way. But I really felt that if I did not walk the talk to encourage more people to get involved, because I would run for reelection, that I would, in fact, be defeating my own mission, which is to get more people to become involved. So I know that I will have many other things to do in the town and through other means of community and civic service, but I make this decision with incredible gratitude for the trust that people gave to me, and yes, admittedly, my awesome Oliver, who was really the linchpin in my campaign at the time. And yes, we do have a new puppy, and I had a lot of speculation from people asking me if I was running, and that's why we got him. But no, that was not the case. So I just want to take this opportunity to thank, in particular, the people who have been incredibly patient with me, because I know that my style is a little different, and my energy level can be a little different at night. But I want to acknowledge and thank Jim, and Peter, and Kathy, before them, who all kind of shepherded me along. And that's really the message here, is that all of these elected positions will have people to support you. You don't need to have done them before. And so I hope that this message will really get people inspired to get involved and to consider running for our next election, and I hope we only have contested races. And with that, a motion to adjourn, I will entertain.
No.
No?
No motion.
No motion?
I'll second.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we hope you have a good evening. We look forward to seeing everybody at the budget hearings on Saturday, February 8th. It's going to be a rockin' good time. And we have a meeting on Monday, February 10th, and that will be a very important continuation of the sewer capacity conversation that we started this evening. Thank you, everybody who stayed with us this evening, and we'll see you soon.